What a Russian, richest man.
Are you set to go?
Well, you will.
I will.
We're just gonna pick on him over there if he sits over there, so, you know.
You're not gonna pick on me if I sit up there?
Sure.
Oh.
You want us to?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, all right. That's right.
So, um... Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting for August 25th, 2014 is called to order. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move then to the first item on the agenda, which is the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road corridor plan, planning file LE 14-04. And we have a staff report.
Thank you Chair Kidwell and Planning Commissioners. The Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road corridor concept plan is being developed to address deficiencies in the pedestrian bicycle facilities along the corridor of Lynn Avenue, Leland and Myers Road. The area of the plan is from Fifth Street at Jackson Street to Myers Road at Moxon Way. Along this route, there are very few existing sidewalks. The plan will develop the city's preferred street sections to address these deficiencies when future development occurs. And the plan will also look at ways to connect important features along the corridor, such as parks and schools, by means of paths, sidewalks and bicycle lanes. In addition, the plan will address the needs of the corridor intersection of Lynn Avenue, Warner Milne, Warner Parrot Road and Central Point Road intersection by proposing an intersection improvement plan or roundabout in that location. As a legislative file, this is an adoption of a plan amendment to the city's transportation system plan. And in order to amend the comprehensive plan of the city, we have to consider the plan implementation process, the adequacy of the plan to guide land use actions, including an examination of trends, whether the plan still reflects community needs, desires, attitudes and conditions. And this includes analysis of demographic and economic conditions and also the addition of updated factual information that is made available from time to time. So, the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road or concept or corridor plan is part of the city's transportation system plan, which was adopted in 2013. It's an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, which requires regular review and update. The corridor plan is both a technical document and a conceptual guide. So, it doesn't provide all of the projects down to a detailed level that are gonna be needed to be implemented over time, but it does provide an initial planning level estimates and locations for those types of things. And importantly, it requires input by the public, including Oregon City residents, affected agencies, boards, the Citizen Involvement Committee, neighborhood associations, the Planning Commission and City Commission. This is done through the regular public involvement process prior to the legislative process, as well as the legislative process described in the city code. And the plan implementation process is consistent with the comprehensive plan. With respect to the adequacy of the plan to guide land use actions, including analysis of trends, there is an existing and future conditions analysis out to 2035 in the plan. It provides direction for future development, funding priorities and needs. It is a comprehensive review of the corridor system for all modes of transportation. It will guide future land use actions and the development of criteria to be used in land use actions. And it provides cost estimates and contingen-- excuse me, contingencies for the planning and design of recommended facilities. With respect to community needs, desires, attitudes and conditions, the analysis of demographics and economics started with what was called the Transportation Area Zone Methodology in the Transportation System Plan that was adopted in 2013. And that plan identified this corridor plan as a needy planning document. In response to increased use of the corridor and safety concerns for all modes of transportation system users, it includes an existing conditions analysis, a future needs assessment, and analysis and an analysis of alternatives in the chapters that are in the document. And it projects motor vehicle travel growth for the year, through the year of 2035. And finally, it identifies roadway geometry and safety needs, vehicle capacity needs, pavement needs, multimodal capacity needs and project needs. Various forms of factual information that provide an update here are made available by ODOT, regional, state and federal governmental agencies, including TRIMET, ODOT. And we also have traffic counts along the corridor, ridership data, cost estimates, which are also all used to update the plan. And those are in the technical appendices, which are Exhibit 1A. With respect to comp plan goals and policies, Section 1, Citizen Involvement, there was extensive public involvement effort. There was, as I mentioned, Traffic Advisory Committee meetings, CIC meetings, Neighborhood Association outreach. And there was also direct meetings with the Historic Review Board, Planning Commission and City Commission meetings, also with the Natural Resources Committee. There was an open house, there's been a project website. And the comments that are received over that period have been integrated into the final product. There's been a community email list and an online survey and the legislative review and approval process. With respect to comp plan goals for land use, Section 2, the plan supports walking and bicycling options to vehicle use. It supports multimodal travel options. It's intended to improve those options between residential areas and the downtown and waterfront. And it will promote interneighborhood connectivity through a variety of modes. It is intended to help prioritize public facilities to serve desired land uses along the corridor and promote a complete transportation system. With respect to natural and historic and cultural resources in Section 5, portions of the project area do fall within our Natural Resource Overlay District and portions of Singer Creek. Also, the Geological Hazard Overlay District for slopes and landslides and the McLaughlin Historic Conservation District. Should projects fall outside of the existing right of way, that would trigger various review processes at the time, including protection of trees and street trees and those sorts of things. If the projects occur within the existing right of way and can be accommodated without increasing impervious surfaces, there are specific exemptions in our code for those types of things. But, for example, if widening the right of way to accommodate sidewalk construction in Natural Resource Overlay District would trigger review by the Planning Division at that time. Section 6 of the comp plan with respect to air, water and land resources, there are a lot of different goals and policies here. Importantly, this plan will encourage safer bicycling and walking in an effort to reduce vehicle trips. The roundabouts in particular will help to reduce idling vehicles and increase vehicle capacity and flow through those areas so that there will not be vehicles standing waiting for a light. And that would help to improve air quality. The objective is to provide unobstructive paths for pedestrians and bicycles through these areas as well and separate them from vehicle traffic. And part of the improvements are intended to help treat stormwater runoff into areas that are draining from the corridor through the use of various treatments, including landscaped swales. The Public Facilities section is there to ensure adequate funding and that public facilities are timely, orderly and efficient. It's intended to be the basis for obtaining future funding for specific projects. And as part of the city's capital improvement program, there's a framework, a schedule and a prioritization and cost estimate associated with these options right now at a planning level. They help us to optimize our investment in transportation and also our investment in multimodal traffic investments on our minor arterial road. And also they help foster regional coordination for bus and mass transit. Section 12 is the Transportation section. Doesn't need a lot of description here, but the intent is to complete a set of multimodal travel options, provide walkable neighborhoods, ensure that land use and transportation connections are mutually supported, promote mass transit, promote safety for all users, ensure adequate capacity and improve connectivity and maximize efficiency. We also made findings for consistency with statewide planning rules, which are listed here, including the public involvement, land use, resources, natural hazard sections, public facilities, transportation and energy conservation goals. There are also findings for consistency with other transportation plans that we're subject to, including the Oregon Transportation Plan or OTP, the Oregon Highway Plan, the Regional Transportation Functional Plan and the Oregon City Transportation System Plan. I'm gonna let the consultants speak in more detail about the specifics of the plan. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Lynn Avenue, Leland Road, Myers Road Concept Plan, which is included as Exhibit 1 as an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan to the City Commission for their consideration on September 17th. And I'd like to enter this PowerPoint into the record. We also provided a set of public comments in support of the application by Mr. Don Brettahoff. And those are supplementary to the public comments that are already in your packet, attached to the staff report. And Wallace Engineering will be presenting the document to you. Thank you. David?
Let me get that up.
So, is this new information since the last time we met?
There's very little new information. We did go through an implementation plan and finalize the corridor report based on the recommendations of you guys and the public and incorporating all the comments from city staff. So, this presentation is very similar to the previous one. There are a few changes, but I'll kind of run through that as we go along. So, I tend to run through this relatively quickly. I assume that's preferable?
Perfect.
When you get to those changes that have been made, can you just?
Sure, absolutely.
Point those out?
So, my name's Dave Rokan with Wallace Engineering. We were contracted by the city to perform this corridor analysis. We've worked with DKS and the city forces to look at the plan and the issues with the corridor itself, and we'll go through that. An overview of the corridor plan, we've broken into six phases. You've seen Chapters 1 through 4, and we did not correct the 1 through 3 and then room of numerals for some reason. Sorry about that again.
Yeah, that was pointed out.
And then Chapter 5 and Chapter 6 are new to you guys. That was implemented after the last Planning Commission meeting. The corridor spans from Jackson Street up to Moxon Way, Lynn Avenue, Leland and Myers. This particular graphic was updated to break into, we previously had four segments and we separated out the Singer Creek connectivity, the Gardner Middle School improvements and the roundabout to kind of match with the implementation plan that we foresee for the project. Again, we looked at the existing connectivity and access and this graphic has been unchanged from before. It kind of highlights some of the issues with the corridor and lack of connectivity. We identified a number of major concerns. This, again, has not changed. The issues with safety, speed, stormwater, right of way, no sidewalks, no bike lanes throughout the corridor. From that, we came through and prioritized what we wanted to look at with the corridor and how, what we most wanted to address in the corridor, and that's unchanged from before. This document is taken from the TSP and represents... The corridor plan itself cannot be built to full standards of the city code. And so, we used the determination for optimum street designs from the TSP to come up with what we felt was an appropriate design for these segments of the corridor. Again, this is the same graphic of the corridor plan.
Could you go back to the red one?
Yeah, sure.
Just kind of wanted to point out, you have at the bottom, a minimum of 82 feet of right of way is needed to construct a minimum standards. But 60 is all we have, so rather than take yards away from people to get the extra 28, which would basically be 10 feet on each side, we're looking at modifying it down to essentially the footprint that it is. It might be a little wider, but it's, we're talking about a couple of feet, not tens of feet.
Right. I mean, in essence, it's taking out the potential for parking on street. It's potentially taking out a median lane, some of these items that are not necessarily priority items for the street.
Right.
You know, we're generally within the corridor. There's not a lot of widening going on for what we're doing. We try to keep that to a minimum.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that because that was one of the comments I got is, you know, the street's gonna be on my front door if you widen it to standards, so.
We have topographic issues as well.
And there, yeah, in certain segments, certainly the first segment of the corridor, it's just not feasible to build it that way.
You're not gonna build a 20-foot wide causeway to go out?
Bridge it over the...
Can it run?
No, it's not gonna happen.
Not blasting the cliff either.
Yeah. So, again, the corridor plan that we've identified and how we've broken it into different segments and opportunities. Starting with Segment 1, the lower portion of Lynn Avenue, serious topographic issues. I don't believe this graphic has changed since before. I think we've highlighted the retaining wall issues. They're certainly within the Geological Hazard Zone and some serious engineering's gonna have to go into improvements within this corridor based on those issues. But we've identified, you know, roughly improvements that might fit within this with limited widening areas. And then, as part of our estimates of the improvements, we were generally pretty conservative with the wall construction throughout here based on the unknowns.
Yeah. One section, we talked about putting the sidewalk against the cliff and all that, which I think is great for safety, but something that, after driving it a couple of times, clicked is that's gonna require pedestrians to cross over Lynn at effectively a blind corner.
You're talking at Jackson down the very end?
Yeah, Jackson and Fifth. And once they're across the street, I think that's great. But getting them across the street on a regular basis, so I think what might be useful would be either to take the sidewalk up around the corner where it kind of already exists and then have the crosswalk to switch them across. Or if you have a pedestrian crossing, like we have now at Seventh by the library.
John Adams.
Yeah, thanks. That when somebody wants to cross the crosswalk, they push the button and another light comes up about where our speed sign is, blinking saying crosswalk in use so that drivers will understand that there's pedestrians to be...
Yeah, that's a reasonable suggestion. And there are a lot of ways to kind of have at that. And you'd wanna look at, you know, sight distances and those rapid reflecting, flashing beacons, rectangular flashing beacons. Those are fantastic to get compliance for pedestrian crossings. And so, that's something that we should definitely consider down at that end. We try to avoid crossings at mid-block. I'm not sure if that's what you were recommending in that kind of tangent section of Lynn Avenue where Fourth stubs out. Preferable to have it at an intersection.
Sure. I just, it's just a case of, there's already a walkway, but anyway. I should stop interrupting and let you finish this, but it was...
It was a good suggestion.
Can you talk about the shared use path? I had a question this week about why we have a... We're showing a wider shoulder, which I think many would interpret as a bike lane, but we don't have a bike lane on the uphill lane. So, the concern was that we... The thinking being, why don't we have a bike lane in the uphill lane? Because that's usually people coming down the road are using the travel lane with, because they're on a bike.
Right. Well, then, the intent of the shared use path is that it's gonna provide connectivity for both bicyclists and Peds. And what you gain out of a shared use path that you don't get out of a bike lane is that because of the nature of the street and the speeds and the windiness of it, you'll get a lot of users, like small kids, that are just not gonna feel safe riding in a bike lane here. And so, we felt that a shared use path provided a measure of protection from vehicles on the street. And it just seemed to be a better solution to provide access for more types of users.
And that's primarily the uphill direction, which means you have slower bicyclists. Because I know when I wrote it, I just was right in the middle of the street coming down as fast and lickety-splity as I could, so.
You've got another mode of transportation too, and that's those skateboarders. I mean, they get lethal sometimes. I don't know so much going up, but coming down, they're right in the middle of the street.
Right. Segment 2 is up after we crest the hill on Lynn Avenue. This segment had some measure of sidewalk and connectivity. There were some smaller segments that we were looking to do some infill sidewalk on, look at some crossing improvements and address some of the non-ADA compliant curb ramps in the corridor. But not much has changed from what you've seen before on Segment 2. Segment 3, this had a lot more pronounced lack of connectivity. And we've done very similar, identified a cross-section through here, wanna address, you know, some of the issues. We looked at the roundabout and we'll talk about that later, but not much has changed from what you've seen before on this as well. Segment 4, the end of Myers and the end of the project. This hasn't changed at all, and this section of Myers Road has no sidewalks, very, almost no shoulder, as well as really tight. We also looked at Singer Creek. I don't believe we've changed this graphic from before, but we looked at some connectivity to get people to and from Singer Creek Park and allow for an alternative option for pedestrians to get down Lynn Avenue, you know, instead of using Lynn Avenue itself. And then, we also looked at improvements to Gardner Middle School. I don't believe this graphic has changed. Looking at new sidewalks, connectivity between some of the cul-de-sacs that spur into the school facility but don't connect up. But, yeah, no changes to this one as well. And then, we also looked at the Central Point, Lynn Avenue, Warner Melon intersection. We analyzed a couple of different options for roundabouts, and this is our currently preferred option, you know, addressing this. And I don't believe this has also changed since previous discussions.
Yeah, I guess my comment on that.
Let's let him get done and then we... Because I have questions about the roundabout too, so let's him get done.
Sure. Yeah. So, from the improvements that we identified throughout the corridor, we went and did cost estimates for what we saw as the improvements and tried to be relatively conservative with what we saw to get pretty good planning level cost estimates for each. And then, we looked at public comments, where people were seeing their most concerns to try and rank the projects as to what could get funding, what could be either quick fixes or easily done. And we came up with these seven phases, starting with the Gardner Middle School improvements, relatively low cost. And a lot of public comments just seemed like, you know, an easier project to get funded, followed by the Singer Creek connectivity improvement similarly, relatively low cost, but provided a lot of what we thought was bang for your buck. The next one up was the Segment 1 improvements. There's just been a lot of public comment about the speed and the safety, just the lack of sidewalks through that segment. It does have a much higher cost than some of the other improvements, but we felt it was warranted to push it up a little bit higher just because of, you know, the lack of potential for development on that corridor. It just wasn't gonna get done otherwise. Followed by the roundabout improvements. We pushed that up because of the city's acquisition of right of way and just the timing looked good to move that one forward. That particular intersection is having some level of service issues with the Central Point and Warner Parrot. And so, that's been identified and the TSP is something that needs to be addressed. And the roundabout was something that we looked forward, looked into as a solution to that. Followed by Segment 3. Segment 3 and Segment 4 were kind of a toss-up between which one... Segment 4 was certainly a worse-conditioned segment of the street, but there were some other issues that pushed that below Segment 3 just because Segment 3 was more built out and less likely to have potential development that might come through and improve that corridor. And the sewer master plan is part of Segment 4, and so that might be something that moves Segment 4 along as opposed to pushing it through with this phase. And then, the Segment 2 improvements was relatively small. There was some alternative connectivity within that segment, so we moved that to the end as far as priorities. Was it, sorry, were there any questions on the implementation phases? And then, finally, next step, with our public involvement process, we intend to incorporate any comments from the legislative process. And then, from that, we'll finalize our corridor plan and then look to get the plan adopted by the Planning Commission and then the City Commission for review and approval. That's it.
I got a question for you. Did you give any consideration to lighting? Did you go over that or did I miss it or...
We did. We included cost for lighting in our estimates.
I'm not talking about signals, I'm talking about...
No, no, street lighting, illumination, yeah. There are a number of areas that are dark, that could use some illumination. We have costs in the improvement plan to cover that.
Because I know on a dark rainy night, boy, that's a tough one to drive. Especially if people are crossing at night.
Have you guys considered using biofiltration swells as part of some of the landscaping along the roadways?
We have, well, as part of our cross-section, we incorporated some rain gardens, sidewalk side rain gardens. Storm, you know, biofiltration swales are generally a little bit wider. It would eat up a little bit more right of way. They're certainly viable alternatives.
I think Segment 3 is probably the place where you wanna be looking at that. That has probably the worst drainage on that whole plan. Is that, am I...
We've got flooding and Mud Creek comes through that section.
And makes mud.
And it's muddy.
And maybe that's not even gonna help.
Could you go back one to the five, seven segments?
Well, the challenge there is just, you know, a lot of that's got existing curbs and gutters, so there's not a lot of opportunity for that. But there is some opportunity for that, so you're right.
Yeah, and then I guess my other comment would... I think Segment 3 is probably the most impassable part of that roadway in terms of availability of bike lanes and pedestrian access. I would hope that we could bring... I know that it's hard to get right of way for that. I know it's all built out and everything, but if there's some way we could, you know, bring that up in level of priority, it would be great because I think that's the one missing link, I think, the one piece that makes people unable to transact that entire roadway. I'll never go on that roadway with my bike until I see a bike lane there.
I think Damon and I were, had a question about the roundabout. If you could go back to that slide, that'd be great.
And my basic comment is, I think the roundabout needs to center a little more northeast. Just, I'm using the...
North and east?
Well, yeah, I'm just using the slide as a, top is north kind of idea. Or northwest, I'm sorry. Go back.
I'm sorry. Is there a laser pointer on this, Pete?
Yeah, I think so.
It's supposed to be.
Nope, that's not it. That's not it. Oh, there it is. There we go. Okay, so you're thinking north and west, or west?
East. North, no, northwest.
North and west.
More into, into the Mount Pleasant property.
Yeah, so I did look at that. And we had comments from the owner of the mini mart here, and that was her comment as well, was that she wanted it pushed into the city property. And what we did when we first designed this roundabout and looked at that is we did push it pretty much as far as we can. And where we run into trouble is right there, is the corner of that building, sorry. The corner of the existing building kind of constraints where we can push the right of way. Because you have to, you have to turn vehicles, you know, into the right of way. And so, there's certain design constraints that force this part out. And that pushes us real close to the building phase.
Which building?
The existing building that's gonna, what was the elementary school.
So, that building would, in the plan, would go away. So, we have some latitude to...
Those are, but those were like... Those are, but those were like mobile trailer thingies that they put on foundations, so I mean, I don't think that's any great loss.
I think the spotting in this roundabout is, the key things that we heard was, look, a lot of people love the roundabout, but only if it's built right. Only if it's built big enough to maneuver, only if it's got the right number of lanes to manage the traffic, so we're not seeing problems there. So what I remember about the challenge is some of that is just the more, you know, you move it to the northeast, the bigger impact to the church, the church's, because, you know, you kind of have to visualize not just the circle moving, but all the incoming lanes moving as well. So, you know, we talked to the church folks as well, and we'll continue to have those conversations, but they had concerns about their frontage as well and their parking. So the more you move that kind of northeast, or, you know, maybe it's a little better as you move it northwest. But you start getting to where, you know, every foot counts there. But we're also pretty aware of the shopping center, and we're trying desperately. We've been talking to the owner of that, and she's got some real questions about that that I think deserve good answers, so we're working with her.
Well, and it's been my experience traveling and going through hundreds of roundabouts in Europe and all over, that the more deflection you give each street, you know, the better it is, that people have time to react to each street. I mean, you know, the, well, basically, just that. The more they have to deal with the roundabout rather than just skim the edge of it, to skip out of one street into the other. Between speed and, you know, pedestrian, you know, it's a good, it does its traffic calming if you have to enter and interact with the roundabout, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
And in essence, yeah, whoever does design this to full design will have to address those issues. And we've tried to make, in an attempt to do exactly what you're saying. What you do with the design is you address the speed of vehicles coming into the roundabout, and if it's at a certain speed, you need to slow them down. And so if you look at this leg here, for instance, it does exactly what you're telling. It kind of winds, turns to the left, and then turns to the right. And that wiggle is what slows people down, and it also kind of breaks up the visual of, you know, it's not a linear look into this roundabout. You're not going straight into the tangent of the roundabout. You actually have to deflect into it.
Which also helps the flow. The section north of this, so.
Where the word leg is?
Yeah.
Lynn?
Correct. That's also the area where we have a sewer moratorium in place. So is there any, I guess this is for John, is there any thought about? That's essentially the last segment you have on your priority of seven. And, yeah, we've got that sewer moratorium, which means we need to do something with the street. So wouldn't that be, wouldn't that up its priority?
Actually, I don't think it's the last segment. The sewer moratorium is further down the hill near Pearl Street, so that's where the problem is for the sewer moratorium. Even though the sewer moratorium extends up into this area, the pipe that we need to fix is down near Pearl Street. So I am hoping that there's some things that we could do with that, you know. If the funding aligns well with fixing the sewer pipes, because, you know, fixing those always gets fairly destructive, so. It'd be nice to be able to maybe look at.
Screw it up once for a couple of months.
Realigning Pearl or doing something like that, you know, as this program recommends, so.
Can you pull up the map of that segment, the Pearl?
And one?
Yep.
So this sewer, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and that's, and that's fine. One of the complaints that we hear a lot, both at McLaughlin Neighborhood Association and such, is the speed of people coming down the hill past Singer Creek. Has there been any thought to taking the little Charmin Electric Lynn triangle and turning that into a roundabout also? Because that sure as heck's going to slow down those 45 mile an hours.
That's a big hole there, though.
Well, yeah, so you drive around it. Roundabouts are things you drive around.
I thought you meant you want people to drive into it.
Well, that will take care of the speed problem. At least for the first hundred or so cars.
Yes, first few cars, then people get worn.
That is not something we had considered at this point. Our consideration was actually to close Electric Street and add a left turn lane.
The thing is, that route, while it's not a truck route, it's a commerce route, so we've got buses on there, and I just, yeah, just the topography of that area. We hadn't put thought into that.
Well, and I hadn't thought about the impact with semis and stuff, because there isn't enough room for bigger vehicles to go around. It'd be great for cars, but yeah, so I withdraw my comment.
Well, before you go off this one, I think you were suggesting, Dave, that at the last meeting we talked about, particularly on this segment, that you might be recommending putting the, what I call them are the road buttons along the edge, so if somebody.
The turtles.
Sort of tries to drive over, they get boom, 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 you know, they'll know that they're there. Was that?
I don't recall that, but that would be something that would come up in the design process. You know, what kind of lane striping you use, whether you use the raised markers or not. You know, sometimes bikers don't like the raised markers. That's something to consider as well, and so they might be somebody you want to consult before you put.
Well, see, they don't have to drive over them either. They stay in the bike lane, they won't have.
Yeah, but because, you know, it's a steep street, and they might be transitioning from this wide shoulder to the travel lane. That's something to consider.
Well, and I think what she's talking about is the big turtles as opposed to the little.
Like full delineators? Like with the big mounds with the poles sticking out of them?
No pole, just, you've got them on, they've got them on Oakfield, where they're just white mounds, you know, about twice the size of a hamburger, and you know it if you hit it with a car. Plenty of room for bikes to go between, and even room for somebody who's pulling off for an emergency can maneuver between them. But you know if you hit them when you're in a car, and they're not the rumble strip.
Yeah, the ones that are ended in the pavement, yeah.
Couple of things that concern me would be, you know, just, we've got fairly narrow travel lanes. We're talking 11 to 12-foot travel lanes. So the idea with those is to essentially narrow the lane that should help with the speed, along with a lot of other measures that might help. More and more, you're seeing these like, they're two-foot stripes that kind of, just, they're perpendicular to the travel lane but right against the white stripe, if you will. So they essentially warn you of, you know, kind of, it's another indicator that there's a curve, you know, coming, or there's something coming ahead. You know, if we did something like a, you know, we're just, we're really tight on this section anyway, so adding that with some shy distance means, you know, we're pretty soon, even though it's an eight-inch bubble, if you will, you know, you probably need, you know, eight inches on one side of that between the sidewalk just to help allow for drainage, and then on the other side, you need to allow for some shy distance for vehicles.
I'm just asking that.
So something like a thermoplastic, we see those too in some of the state jobs where they've got a raised, there's a profile to that thermoplastic stripe that might be right along. You know, it could be a white, eight-inch white stripe.
Yeah, I'm just asking that something be looked at as part of this plan that could alert whoever it is that's traversing that street. And, because I, you know, I use it a lot, and one of the things I always notice is that the cars are, they're coming down, and they start hugging over the bike lane, and I'm just, you know.
They start following you.
And it's perfectly wide enough to stay in the travel lane if people were paying more attention. But it's, you know, speed, and they're, phew, they're just.
Well, and I think the evidence that what Denise is saying is true is that if you travel that road, you'll see on the inside turns that stripe gets worn off real quick. So.
And that might be where I would maybe recommend a treatment like that. Maybe not the entire corridor, but the inside.
On the inside.
Yeah, just where, you know, it might provide a little additional margin.
A reminder that you're out of bounds.
Right. You know, it would have to be something, a designer's going to have to look at it because of the, you know, the speed and the windiness of the street. You want to make sure that if people hit it, they don't lose control over correcting and that kind of thing. So certainly something that could be considered.
Sure. So we'll just have staff write up some suggestions as an amendment to this.
Flashing lights and sirens.
For the planning commission. So back to the roundabout diagram. I don't have any major concern with it. I think it will be a good idea. I don't think people in this community are too old to learn new tricks, so I think people can learn how to use it. My concern is for the Plaid Pantry property that we try to minimize the impact to that property as much as possible. The other thing is I wanted to ask is, I would really like to see this be a lot greener, and I'm sure John has already got that in mind, so that the, even the areas where you're showing that it's green, it would be great if that could be planted, so it's not just one big giant striped area with asphalt and pavement. That it would be somehow pleasing. I know, you know, one of my favorite ones is that one in Burnside, in Portland.
With Joan of Arc.
That you're heading down, and, you know, it's, you can go slow enough that you can kind of look at everything as you're kind of cruising around and looking at the plants, and, you know, I don't know if we need a Joan of Arc statue, but who knows, maybe somebody will propose some sort of art that could be there. We might have a contest.
What you're saying is you would like to see the green actually represent landscape.
Be green.
That's something low, so you can see.
Yeah, oh yeah, it would have to be low. But in the roundabout, you know, we have some, we have some major opportunities to do something really attractive there.
You want something Joan of McLaughlin.
Well, the one thing, I was kind of listening to what Damon and John were saying back and forth, and it strikes me if those buildings at Mount Pleasant could either be relocated or removed, that the least impact to the private property would be to shift the center of that roundabout to the north and west, maybe 20 or 30 feet. And that would have the least impact then to the other three corners with the private property, and the most impact to the city property on that corner.
Yeah, that's certainly, certainly something that can be looked at, just to make sure.
Yeah, we know you're not designing it.
No, 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 but if you do move, with every move north, you are going to impact this property, this frontage of the church.
Incidentally, we can't see your dot.
Oh, gosh, sorry, yeah.
We're looking at the screen down here.
That's okay, go ahead and do it for the public. We'll turn around.
So as you move the roundabout to the north, you will be impacting the church property as well.
No, I was suggesting to the west.
Yeah.
Most, more west than anything else.
Right.
Slightly north.
Certainly, and with regard to the Plaid Pantry property, it's going to be a challenge to avoid impact to the Plaid Pantry property simply because of the nature of their right-of-way. Their right-of-way is currently out in the public road corridor itself, so.
Say that again?
The Plaid Pantry right-of-way is out in the public corridor.
So you're saying that portion of the Plaid Pantry parking lot is in the public right-of-way?
Not the parking lot, but their right-of-way. They own out into the street.
Oh, they own out into the street.
And so it's just going to be a challenge to not.
How did they do that?
Yeah, how did they do that?
It happens. In Oregon City, it happens a fair amount.
Well, I'm just concerned that it happens with that particular property owner.
If you were to take that whole circle, slightly north and west, it would reduce the impact on this portion of the property here and the church at the same time.
Just remember, it's kind of like physics, every action has a reaction.
Right, no, I understand.
So, but I fully understand that that is our problem corner.
But I would like to see.
They have the most going on, they're a viable business, and that's an important.
Yeah, I'd like to see you ignore that building that's on the Mount Pleasant property as if it weren't there and figure out the best plan, and then see what the impact to that building would be. And it's feasible possibly just to shift the building over, move the building 10 feet.
I don't think that's something they're going to keep. Like I said, it's a modular structure. It's nothing to write about.
I think the plan is to, if they keep it, is to move it over to where the parking.
All right, I think we're, I think we're good. Got any comments, Tom?
Nope.
All right.
Any other questions, comments?
On the electric avenue, what are your plans? I mean, would you block it off and then leave it as a stub blocked on both Lynn and Charmin?
So, one of the things that we, I mean, with regard to Electric, we talked a little bit about some of the options that you could have right at Electric, right here at Lynn. Some of the opportunities that Closing Electric provide, that area could be used for parking for the park. You currently have no parking available for the park.
Tiny bit.
What's that?
There's a tiny bit.
There is a tiny bit, right, right at the trailhead. It's true. It could be utilized for stormwater. There are a lot of opportunities in that space, but those are the two that kind of jumped to mind.
We could sell it off to the landowner who owns the hole and then we've got money for the.
Don't we own the hole?
Nope.
No, it's private.
It's an odd piece. I'm not quite sure why it's privately owned, but.
Yeah, David Dodds, former Westland mayor owns it.
Oh, I know David.
So I think you're right, there's some opportunities there that we would want to pursue. And I'm hoping we can do a little of both. Parking and, parking for the park and, you know, it's not really a trailhead, but, you know, it could be a little bit like that. And then we know we're going to have to manage stormwater. We're going to, to make this a wider section, we're going to have, you know, more impervious area that we'll be adding, so it'd be a good upstream location for stormwater management, so.
I just think that we're, if we don't, we're missing an opportunity to really illuminate that whole corridor for public safety. Because at night, when it rains, it is a bugger to navigate, because you're looking for pedestrians, really what you are, and they just come out of nowhere. And so if you could, you know, incorporate that into your thinking, I mean, really, first-class stuff.
Well, especially at that location that we're talking about. If we put parking across the street from the park, I see you've got a pedestrian-activated signal there, but lighting, like Bob is saying, is really critical. Just because somebody is legally crossing the street doesn't mean the driver's going to see them unless they're well lit.
Right, and the intent of the corridor.
The driver of the pedestrian.
Is to address lighting in the corridor. And certainly where you have crossings, the lighting levels are much higher.
I think it'll make the use of the right-of-way more efficient if it's well lit.
That's why we have Electric Avenue. All ready then.
Any other questions? Okay, very good, thank you.
Hey Pete, do we need official action to get this?
Yes.
We're not done yet.
You're going to go through that, okay.
If there's any public comment.
Yes.
Do we have any other cards? I have one card.
So far, I think I just received the one slip for public comment on this item, but if anybody wants one, I'll switch to.
I have one card for public comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Nope, they're all here for the.
Okay, I have Fred Juris.
Yep, come on up.
Fred, the item? Yeah?
Mr. Rogal, are you ready?
No, I'm right here.
Oh, could you help out a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to represent Betty Savage for Savage Enterprises. She was unable to be here tonight.
Could you, it's okay.
You need to sit down. Doesn't count until you're talking to my.
Can you pull up figure 4.5?
The roundabout?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, there are figures in this one, but.
Your name again?
My name is Fred Juris, and I'm here representing Betty Savage. She was not able to be here tonight.
Okay.
And I appreciate all the comments that have happened here tonight, and some of the positive ones about some of the concerns we have about the Savage Mini Mall. Is it possible to pull up this particular diagram? Is it in your software or not?
I don't have this, do you guys have the four-leg roundabout somewhere handy?
Possibly. So our biggest, biggest, can you show where the pointer is on that?
Yeah, it's, sorry, oops, that one.
Oops.
It's the, this one, middle one with the light on it.
Is it in the main document?
Yes, it's in your, one was on the website.
Yeah, it's in the corridor report.
You know the page number?
Oh, gosh.
Is it a little blurry, or is it fuzzy? It's a tiny bit fuzzy. I thought it was me, too, so I think it's it.
It would be in chapter, should be in chapter five. There you go.
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Our biggest concern we've had, and I think Plaid Pantry's also commented on it, that they need access for the trucks into the parking lot. So if we had a humble request or choice, it would be 4.5. I know the recommendation is 5.5, which is the final one. But also I noticed this particular road, which is, I think that's Central Point. That one actually has the least amount of traffic of all of them on the roundabout, which is reasonably like this format, because you decided not to put, you know, an access corridor on this particular street. So of all the things being discussed tonight, our primary concern is access for Plaid Pantry trucks in and out of the mall for deliveries.
Yeah, and, and we understand that that was, that was very clear comments the, the last time, both from Plaid and from, from Betty.
How do they come in now? You just have to tell us when you're doing that, so we can turn around, so we don't, we can't see that ourselves.
I'm not familiar with Oregon City, because I don't live in this particular community, but I understand there's two main accesses which have the most traffic, so these things are normally not here, and they come in and just come around and come in the parking lot this way, and then out this side also. So, our, our humble request is, is it possible to have openings in these medians if you do both sides for access for trucks?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request, because we're going to want commercial traffic, just your customers to come in and out.
Yeah, but then they'll...
I think the, the big difficulty we have with the four-way rather than the five-way is that it's essentially just replicating what we've got, we're just taking the lights out and it, putting a roundabout in, and there is difficulty, I travel Central Point a lot, and there is a lot of trouble getting out, and also making that turn to get onto it. But, one of the big things that I think helped alleviate that is, if we do the five-way and shift it to the northwest, then you've got, I think, a really clear path for your trucks to come in, do the roundabout, pull over, you know, pull into Central Point, and just through the parking lot, and then right back out onto Leland and, and go. But, but the idea of needing the, the medians cut so that traffic can get through is, is very valid, and I think that's when the design phase comes, I think it would need to happen. I mean, there's no way for customers to just get in and out.
And that's our concern.
Yeah.
One of the thoughts that we have on truck traffic is the, the direction in getting those delivery trucks to realize the roundabout, they really, if we, if we cut those medians too close to the roundabout themselves, then they lose a lot of value with pedestrian protections. So, we, we need to work through that, where it's our full intent to do that. We do have some thoughts about, you know, again, using that roundabout instead of, you know, trucks coming in on the Central Point side, you know, forcing the trucks to come in by way of the Lynn Avenue side, so they'd have to come through, go in on that side and go out on the other, and that would...
You mean Leland?
You mean Leland?
You're right, Leland. So, but, it, these are concepts.
These are concepts.
We are working, you know, it's our, fully our intent to work with Fred Juris or Betty, both, who are, you know, we want to, we want that customer to be as happy about that feature and what it does for that neighborhood as, 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 you know, the neighborhoods outside, you know, that aren't right on the point, so, I, you know, we can't always come to 100% agreement, but it's our intent to...
And Mr. Lewis and I had a very cordial conversation concerning this, so I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I, I just, to be honest, I have seen medians kill businesses, and I don't want that to be the case here. That's a, that's a useful, if for no other reason than the Plaid, so people can get their milk in the morning. It, it's a useful location, and, and I don't want to see it get strangled, because people have to do three lefts instead of one right. But, that's design phase stuff, and that's probably six months or more down the road or more, I'll just leave it at that.
There's a lot, did you, did you miss the dollar amount, we still have some challenges there.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, money just happens. But anyway, we definitely acknowledge that that's an...
Thank you very much.
I do not want to strangle that location.
Appreciate it.
So, Dave, before you wander away, whether it's on this concept four dash five or the other one, I will be happy to turn around, so, let's say I'm a responsible truck driver, and I'm making my Pepsi delivery, and I'm coming up two thirteen, I'm coming down Beaver Creek Road, I'm going to come down Warner Millie, instead of driving through the neighborhoods, and I want to get, make my Pepsi delivery at the Plaid Pantry, or the Pizza Place, or the deli. So, how would that, that truck's coming in on Warner Millie?
Coming in Warner Millie?
Yep.
You'd have to wrap around, and then come through here and into the driveway. Now, this, yeah, that's something that we'll certainly have to look at.
Yeah, okay.
That driveway is, is too small, the way it's tightly designed.
Yeah, well, right now it is. But, yeah, that's what I was thinking you were, that's exactly what I was thinking you were going to show, so thank you.
And the locations of the driveways also...
Can shift.
Can shift, they can move around quite a bit. You know, on this one in particular, it seems a bit awkward the way it's set up, but I was trying to move this, the pedestrian crossing, so that, that, you know, it wasn't a, you know, conflict beforehand.
Conflicting, yeah.
So, so there's a lot of flexibility with where we can put that, but certainly, as we do that, we need to work with the property owner, because as you move these driveways around, they're going to have to look at ways to reconfigure their parking, and that would be something that the designer of, of this roundabout will need to, to address.
Well, we also, I think we're fortunate to have a couple of distributors here in town, and they don't always use the gigantic truck, they're, you're using a truck size that's more for inner-city transportation.
Supervan rather than a...
Yeah, instead of the big giant thing, because there's a Plaid Pantry down on Malala Avenue, and I have watched that person maneuver in there, and if you talk about a constrained parking lot, they're usually kind of cattywampus to the door, and I don't know how they get out of the side street to get back on Malala, but...
Truck drivers are amazing at maneuvering their vehicle.
Yes, so, okay, thank you for showing us that.
But I, I do also think that some of the things that we've talked about would be, it, it would go toward addressing those issues if that roundabout were to be shifted, as we talked about. The next person we have to speak from the public is Kathy Hogan.
You might want to...
Oh.
Yeah, don't go away.
Everybody likes you.
You're just too popular today.
Some of these people know me for 20 years, and I don't buy, I might yell at you, but I don't buy it. Good evening, Kathy Hogan. I did, that was part of my concern, because I just, you know, took a, went across the street, took a left to get on Central Point, yesterday I think it was, and the traffic stops, and I can't go any farther, so that leaves me hanging out to ma, to keep, continue on, because there's no left turn lane there. So, that's what I was wondering, if that was going to alleviate that, and there would not be people going the roundabout, stacking up, trying to get in, that they were going to have a one-way in, one-way out, or some kind of pattern that would alleviate that for everybody.
Well, the first intent of this was to have a one-way in and one-way out. There are a variety of ways that this, that the access to and from the Plaid Pantry could be addressed, but that was my first flush at this and, and what I've kind of stuck with. But, you know, if we work with the, with, with them, you know, there, there are opportunities to, to bring it in here, but, the, the intent is, certainly we want to, whenever we address the access, so if, if we had an access in on the Central Point side, what we'd need to look at is, is the amount of stacking for vehicles here, if there's a turnout space...
Because you're achieving your purpose.
Exactly. But that would be something that the designer of, of this portion of the roundabout would really need to look at, if there's enough space. And there's guidance in, in planning documents for designing these roundabouts for what that minimum would be.
Because, because we use that every, my husband uses it every Friday, stops at the Plaid Pantry, so, and it is hard to get in and out.
Mm-hmm.
And I go, I use Warner Millie and, to get home all the time, and it's hard to come around, and you got, you tail end your, your vehicle out while you're waiting for somebody to make that left.
Yeah.
And, because I can tell you, we just come from being in Astoria and doing the roundabout, and that was dangerous. My husband was driving, and the guy was on the inside, went over to the outside, right where, at the bridge where people are trying to merge in, and he had a trailer on, so we almost got it.
Yeah.
Luckily, I screamed at him and he stopped, my, uh, my husband did. Otherwise, all of us would have collided, but it was a poor design, or the man needed to get a ticket, because he went from the inside lane all the way out...
To the outside, yeah.
Yeah, and that was exceedingly dangerous, so I see danger in him, too, so if it's not planned, and that's been there a long time, if it's not planned right, it can be dangerous, and I definitely don't want to see the Plaid Pantry though, so. I just wanted to make sure, though, I didn't get set out.
Yeah, okay.
I don't like that, I want to keep my vehicle.
Thank you, thank you.
Open circle.
And, the last person I have signed up to speak on this issue is William Gifford.
Come on, speak. Make yourself comfortable.
Chair Kidwell, and Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City, and since this is a concept, kind of a conversation, I would just like to make a comment about the, at a, at a much higher level, not so much the details about, about the swales or the curb cuts or any of that thing, but I would like to hope that the, the, the core concept on this is not so much, not just ease of traffic, but safety of traffic, and pedestrians, and the multimodal transportation through there, that it's not, because, because my attitude is, if you make a straight, smooth street, people want to go fast, it's just that simple. And, and I know this isn't straight, but it's going to look like it's going to be, you know, the old Disneyland, Etopia drive, Autopia, whatever it was, to be fun to drive on it, should be fun to drive, but first and foremost, I think the primary core concept has to be safety, and with the lighting concepts, and with the, with the sidewalks and so on, I think that our, our primary issue has to be the safety of the transportation of our citizens, much more so than just the, just the convenience of getting in and out of driveways. That's, that was my point about safety. Thanks, no applause.
That was your, that was your timer.
That was not your timer, but it sounded...
It worked out, it worked out, that's fine, thanks.
Thanks.
All right.
Are there any others that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Pete, are, are we looking at any particular action this evening?
We're requesting a recommendation for approval to the City Commission for September seventeenth, I believe, which is the public hearing that the plan has been continued to for the time being, so. And I will be sure to include a memorandum from staff that summarizes the recommendations that you've made this evening in that report.
Comments from the Commissioners?
John, at the risk of being redundant, isn't this an issue that might be referred to the Traffic Safety Committee?
It already went through.
Did I miss a meeting or something?
Yeah.
Well, I don't remember you missing a meeting, as you're usually there.
You're just missing my memory.
Yeah, we, we have been before the Transportation Advisory Committee a couple times.
Okay.
It's been to them, several of the neighborhood associations, it's been to the Historic Review Board, they've been everywhere.
Man.
To quote someone.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we forward this plan as presented with the addendums, as we've talked about with the roundabout and lighting, and you've got the list, but move, we approve the plan as presented.
I second it.
Just to make sure we got all those little points in our memo.
Let me read them back?
Sure, I have, I made a list as well.
Okay.
Recommendation to look at rumble streets or indications to separate the bike lanes from the travel lane, particularly on the inside curves, try to, try to minimize impact to the Plaid Pantry, maximize use of green techniques, landscaping, and make the intersection and roundabout area as visually attractive as possible. Recommendation to try to shift the center of the roundabout north and west, mostly west, in order to minimize impacts to the Plaid Pantry and other properties. Look at options for Electric Avenue with respect to stormwater improvement. Pay attention to lighting to maximize safety along the right-of-way by street, street lighting, and to make it more efficient. Uh, let's see, what else?
I think you hit, hit them all.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what he said in my motion.
All right, great.
Yeah, I'll call for the question.
Okay. Commissioner Espy? Aye. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkem?
Aye.
Wishing carries.
Aye. Thank you very much, we'll do good things with that.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing you back here for some updates, because we love having our Public Works people come.
Thank you for that.
You're so welcome.
It's your fault for doing such good work.
I think so, coming back with a few sewer issues that you'll be pleased to endure.
I can't wait, I can't wait.
Well, and, and, and just for what it's worth, if you can couple the sewer work with the street work, so they don't have to tear up the street twice, that would be really wonderful.
He doesn't want to do it twice either.
Well, and it allows him to tap into that pot of money for paving and stuff.
Exactly.
I think it gives him something to do over and over.
Okay, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is PC fourteen dash zero nine five, CU thirteen dash zero three, conditional use, and SP thirteen dash twenty-two, site plan and design review for a wireless communication pole on the McLaughlin Elementary School property located at nineteen two thirty South End Road. And since this is a quasi-judicial matter, I'm going to read the script for procedural For this public hearing that is scheduled tonight, a staff report has been prepared for the application and made available to the public seven days before the public hearing. The staff report indicate, identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. The staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart on the wall, which will be followed. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card, so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name, and please come to the desk to speak before you introduce yourself. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city during the time in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be deemed a... be deemed appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. We will now open the record for this file that I just read. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And has any commissioner visited the site?
I don't.
Tom?
No.
No?
I have visited the site since our last public hearing, and I also want to say for the record that I am an AT&amp;T customer, but I am in no way affected by this decision. And I, whatever we're going to decide, and it doesn't affect me one way or the other. I have excellent cell service where I live, and I'm just going to say that for the record.
I have not visited since the last meeting.
Nor have I. I have nothing new to declare at this hearing.
Nor do I.
I have not visited the site lately, and I have nothing to declare.
I have been to the site previously, but not lately. I'm also an AT&amp;T customer, but I'm biased.
Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners for their declarations? Seeing none. We have a staff report on this.
Thank you, Chair Kidwell. As you can tell, my staff report's the same as I gave last time, so I can just breeze quickly through that, for the benefit of the, the members of the public here, we'll, we'll go ahead and show the slides. The applicant, we did have a continuation last time, as requested by the applicant. There was a school board meeting on two weeks ago, Monday, that they wanted to discuss the item, and so requested this continuance, and because of that, they extended our 120-day deadline until October 16th, and the Federal Telecommunications Act 150-day deadline, they confirmed that they've also extended that to October 16th. There has, there have been some minor revisions to the application since we last met. Those were included in your packet in the staff report. The name of the applicant has changed to New Singular Wireless. The narrative has some minor changes, and there was also a few public comments submitted, including a petition against the project, neighborhood association comments objecting to the proposal, and a comment regarding tree removal in easement locations. And so those are summarized in the revised staff report. And the condition of approval, number five regarding tree removal, has been modified to account for one of the comments that was made, just to cover all the bases, no matter which trees may be removed on the site. So we'll go into the staff report now.
And which number was that again?
Five.
Condition number five.
So, the applicant has proposed a 70-foot, 75-foot tall wireless communications pole, designed to look like a fir tree, on the John McLaughlin Elementary School site at 19230 South End Road. The pole location would be near the southwestern portion of the property, close to the parking lot turnaround, and in between that and the softball fields. That's the existing condition right now. The tree right in the middle there, that medium-sized tree, would be removed to make way for the pole and the equipment shelter. The small shed that you see there would also be replaced. We've got various site plans showing the lease area for the, the site's about 30 by The applicant also submitted elevation drawings of the equipment shelter and the pole. It would be surrounded by a six-foot-tall cedar fence, surrounded by arbor vida. And as required by code, the applicant is required to submit renderings of what the pole would look like from various areas surrounding the property. So we've got several different views. Conditional use criteria includes that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the uses that they are listed. And the surrounding properties are entirely single-family residential in this part of town. And the third conditional use criteria, that the proposal satisfies the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The one policy from our comprehensive plan that pertains to this application is to maintain and enforce a cell tower ordinance, encourage innovations in reducing camouflaging or screening cell towers. And the applicant has proposed a camouflaged tower in this location. The site plan and design review criteria have been met. There are a few conditions of approval to ensure that tree mitigation is provided for any trees that might be removed, including the one that we know is definitely, would definitely be removed. If any other trees are affected by any utilities or other site work, those would be included in mitigation as well. And noise requirements, the applicant's shown that they can meet noise requirements by adding a buffer around the equipment shelter, and we're just confirming that they need to, to use that recommendation. So, in summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions in your staff report, and I believe the applicant has the presentation.
There are questions for staff?
Did we, I guess I'll ask it officially, did we get anything from the school district after their board meeting?
We did not.
Okay.
Well, I sure hope somebody here went to that meeting, because I sure would be very interested in to, to know about what they talked about. I did not go specifically because of that. One of the questions I have is that, I think over the last few years, the planning commission has expressed many concerns about tree removal. Is there some reason why we are not getting some draft mitigation plan at the time they submit, so that we can see what they're proposing to do? Because afterwards, we don't know what's, what they're doing. And it's, it's been a concern of mine over several land use applications that we've had, where there's been particularly large trees that are going to be removed, and we don't really know what the mitigation is going to be, because it's a condition. And it would be nice to know what that is, and where that potentially might be, so that we can have some discussion about it. I know we've had many discussions about trees, so I just wanted to get that on the record. And my other question is, and maybe be more for the applicant, is there any particular reason why we are, why it's being proposed to use arbor vida? I will clearly show my bias, it's not a native plant material of this area, they don't do well in Oregon, and when they get damaged, they really look terrible. And I would like to see, you know, I, I think it's always preferable, people try to use native materials, because number one, you don't have to fuss with them so much, and that they're used to being here in our environment. I also hate juniper too, so let me just put that on the record.
Our environment's changing.
Yes, we know, it's getting warmer, it's getting warmer, but, you know, in terms of looking at palm trees, yes, we do have a couple in Oregon City, I've seen them.
Well, I, I would echo your concern about the arbor vida, because they do have a viable life cycle of about 10 to 15 years, and after that, if you try trimming them, they're just horrible.
They just, yeah, I know, they don't, they don't look good.
It would be nice to have something other than arbor vida there. Other questions for staff?
I'm just curious as to why they changed in the application of the applicant. Did you say that the, had the applicant changed?
Yes, she did.
No, the, the name changed.
The name changed, but it's still the AT&amp;T company.
Oh, okay.
Has there been any other examples of this type of camouflage being used on, on cell tower? And if so, I would really like to see what that actually looks like, instead of the stylized drawing that I'm looking at tonight, because some of the ones that I'm, some of the drawings that I'm looking at, and this is something that I always go through with processing design review, I'm always amazed at how amazingly it rises up out of the ground after I've approved something like that. And sometimes I, it, it's always looks larger than, than it's represented on the plans. It always ends up being larger in physical space. So I'm concerned that this is happening here, and I, and I just, there's one, there, there was one angle where you're looking at it from South End Road. It's smaller than the oak tree that's in front of it, and I know that that oak tree is not 70 feet tall. I know it's about, probably about 50 feet tall at the most. And, so I'm, I just, I just need to get a better visualization of what this is going to look like, I guess.
You're concerned how realistic their rendering is?
Yeah, and then, and then I'm also wondering if there's actually going to be all of the antennas that they're proposing on the pole? Or are they, is it going to, is it just because we're going to, is that just showing the co-location potential, or just what's going on there?
I think they, they indicated that they, they have reserved space for the, for future.
Okay. Because I mean, the, the drawing, and I appreciate that, because that shows what it potentially could have on it, and, you know, it has quite a few components on it, and I'm just wondering what that's going to look like relative to the trees. And then I'm also wondering if we were to use natives, like, other than arbor vida, like, like western red cedar, which can grow up to about 70 feet tall or so, if that is an issue with the interference of transmission moves? I know that they, there was an example of one that was planted amongst the tree grove down, down by the church off of 205. And as I was driving by there through the years, there was, there was about six trees around it when it first got built, and then there was four, and then there were...
There's no trees around it now.
...and then, yeah, I think there's like one.
Yeah, I went, I just went by there, and I noted that as well.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the camouflage, and I think that it would probably look really good, but I just, I'm just, I'm not quite there with what it actually looks like right now.
So, do we have any more questions for staff, or can we have the applicant come forward?
Nope.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Speaker, fine. I don't want more paper.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff, city attorneys. My name is Kimberly Allen, I'm with Bush Law Firm, and I'm representing the applicant here tonight. With me is Tom McAuliffe of Velocitel, he is representing the, the new site acquisition consultant on this.
Basically, it's entitlement of the facility, that they have a need, and they've, they've required me to fill that need.
My address is 93 South Jackson Street, Seattle, Washington, 98104.
Excuse me, could, you sort of drifted off there a little bit on your statement, I didn't quite catch it all.
Oh, me? I'm just saying, it's kind of put in mouth. Basically, I am a, I'm hired on as, and as acquisition consultant, so I acquire or entitled to use and acquire the ability to use the land. So I acquire the ones from the property, or then from the jurisdiction. Easiest way, sorry.
Thank you.
And your name again?
My name is Tom McAuliffe, I'm with Velocitel, I live in Twelton, address is 9301. Nope, okay.
Okay, so, so as you can see, we've had a change of personnel since last we appeared before you. New Singular Wireless is the entity that's licensed to do business in Washington and Oregon on behalf of AT&amp;T, and there was an omission on the application, and so we, we fixed that when we had an opportunity to submit a revised application. And in, since we were here with folks from LexCom, we've had a change of personnel there as well, and I have a different company representing AT&amp;T on the acquisition side. So, I had prepared a number of slides which Kelly just actually went through, and, and I know that you've all heard what the project is all about. I actually am here to talk about some of the citizen concerns. Let me, if, if I can, address some of the questions that I heard the commission just raise, with respect to the school board meeting. I did, I did not attend that meeting, but I did get a report from, from that meeting. I understand that eight individuals spoke at that meeting, and the issues that they addressed were the same issues that have been raised before you in public comment here. There were a number of speakers at, some of the issues that were identified, that we had subsequent conversations with the school board about, were the issue of children being able to climb the fence. And so, AT&amp;T is willing to raise the fence height to eight feet, as opposed to six feet. I understand we can do that under your code without a variance, and are certainly willing to, to fence the compound in whatever way is most secure, in, at the discretion of the planners, and in concert with our landlord, the school board. We also discussed removing the, I understand there was a concern raised about children being able to scale the, the pole. The pole's very wide, getting your arms around it would be very difficult, but we have agreed to remove the bottom pegs from the lower portion of the, of the pole. And additionally, the, the roof of the enclosure is slanted and covers almost the, the whole enclosure, and actually hangs over the edges of the enclosure. Inside of the enclosure, all you will find are locked cabinets, there's nothing accessible that children could, could touch or, or be harmed by in there. The school board did take a vote, they, they put on their consent agenda the termination of the lease agreement, there was a vote, it was 3-3, and the board also said that they have no plans to bring the vote before the board again. So the lease is in place, the lease is going forward per the board of, per the school board, as of conversations that we had last week. With me, I also have, as a member of our team, you heard from him last time, Mo Twala. I understand there have been concerns raised about some of the alternatives that members of the public have come forward, some of the churches and the fire station, asking why those sites weren't, weren't chosen. I just handed Kelly an exhibit, it's an additional alternatives analysis, where Mo actually took a look and, and assessed all of those sites, and can tell you why they, they do not work for AT&amp;T, and why this alternative is the least intrusive means for us to, to fill a gap in our coverage. I understand that members of the public also had some concerns about health effects, and as I'm sure that, that you know and staff has said, Congress has acted in this particular area, and has removed discretion from local jurisdictions, so that decision makers cannot consider health effects of RF emissions. If the carrier has put into evidence a, a letter that indicates that we will comply with FCC standards, that letter is in the record before you. This facility will meet, it will be under 10% of the allowed federal limit, and so, so the, the health concerns are not something that, that you can consider in making the decision that's before you today, because it's preempted by federal law. We've also heard concerns about the trees, and actually, Tom is going to address the trees, and then we'll have Mo come up and talk about the alternatives.
Okay, I'm a little latecomer, but from the feedback I received, I watched the hearing that happened back in July, and Commissioner McGriff had certain concerns, very definite concerns about the one oak tree that'll be removed. Right now, it's proposed to be removed. Per the city's code, a tree that diameter, basically the caliber, we will have to, on site, on property, we'll have to plant three replacement trees. And right now, AT&amp;T is going to do that, we're, we're planning to do that. The other issue, other concern that was raised, I don't know if it was, it wasn't raised during your last hearing here, but Kelly brought it up regarding the, the easement on the, let's call it the west side, west property line, it's a long one. If you're, if you're facing the property from South End Road, it's the one on the right, there's a row of like 12 existing oak trees there, and right now, the plan's... And right now, the plans, I don't know if y'all have them in front of you or not, but if you look at it, there's a utility easement that runs a five foot wide, runs up that property line. And there was some concern voiced to Kelly by the residents about that disturbing the trees. First off, if you, you haven't been out there, most of you have not been out there, but if you go out to the site, tune that line of trees and the fence, the chain link fence, it's over 10 feet. We're looking to put in, it's a five foot easement, we'll utilize maybe three feet of it width-wise. So there will be no damage during, to the trees. But if, if there were, heaven forbid, if there were damage to those trees, there is a covenant that's going to be recorded on the, on the property that will require AT&amp;T to basically replace or they'll, they'll have to correct or cure any ills that happen with you.
Additionally, we have no affinity or, or we do not hold arbividae deer. That is a typical landscape item that, that we often suggest. We're certainly open to whatever, whatever ideas the commission might have as to better native plantings that might be more suitable for this location. Couple of other items, we also heard that there was a concern about loss of space where parents could go and watch the softball games. AT&amp;T is willing to put some bleachers in, in alternate location to, to compensate for that loss of recreational space near the ball fields. And then looking at my list, we will, we can provide you with actual pictures of monopines. There's a website that, of the folks that build them and that can give you a far better example of, of it than just the photo simulation drawings. We can do that. We'll get those into the record before the record closes. And, and I think that we have addressed the concerns that were raised by the public since then, but we would like to have Mo come up and talk to you about all the alternative locations where folks thought that-
Real quick before you go, do you, have you guys, somebody raised the issue about lifelight access and I know that that's a really beneficial site for that.
Sure.
Does that, has the FAA entered into this discussion about that?
The FAA actually does not enter into that discussion. The FAA has given us a determination that there is, that the, the tower will be fine, that there's no additional lighting required. And because helicopters go up and down in a straight line rather than on an angled flight path, they, they will treat this as any other 75-foot tree that would be in the vicinity. Certainly, we would, you know, notify lifelight of, of, you know, the tower and make sure that they, they know that we're there.
Yeah, ball field's still big enough. You didn't change the size of that, so.
It's, it's not exactly a moving object.
Did I miss something? Did I hear you say the school board voted 3 to 3?
They did.
Correct. So it was-
To do what?
Yeah, I was, I was kind of confused, 3 to 3.
It was a 3 to 3 vote to, to terminate the lease. There was no majority. So the lease stands and the school board indicated at that meeting that there is no, there's no plan to bring the issue back before the board.
So 3 to 3 means that it's-
So the motion didn't carry then?
Yeah, it didn't carry, so.
Right, because it was a tie and there was nobody to break the tie.
And the lease is by AT&amp;T? Is that the idea that, and that's been there for a long time, so this is just smart?
New Singular Wireless is, is the, is the company that we have licensed to do business on behalf of AT&amp;T and here.
Okay.
The lease is with us.
So what are you leasing?
We're leasing the, the leased area on, I don't know, Kelly, do you have the site plan?
It's the footprint.
The footprint.
50-foot space on the ground. They're leasing the space where it's-
So they've always had the space and have had a tower?
No.
Somewhat of a tower, but they're just-
The lease was signed in March, I think.
Just this year?
Yeah, so.
In preparation for-
In anticipation for, for making this land use application. We have to secure the site control.
The school board is an even number of six, so it was just, they couldn't make a decision one way or another.
To terminate it.
Isn't that handy?
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I believe you know Mo. He's been here before.
Thank you, by the way.
Mo's been doing a lot of work on all of the alternative sites proposed by the public.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, the rest of the team and attendees, and thank you for bringing up such a great point. I heard all the questions and nothing that I've never heard before, but of course, we need to answer these questions. Now, there are seven alternative locations which they came up with, neighborhood. And we have analyzed all of them, one by one, and it looks like that they're all far from the search ring. Now again, I want to just specify what the ring is. It's the vicinity of the area where we have to look for the candidate. And why is that? Because that's the only place which is going to, this is the place where we need to build a site to make sure that we hit, or we cover the gap and we make sure that everyone has the coverage. I went through a few of the street names last time and Commissioner Kidwell, I don't know if you remember, I went through, I had a few names in my list. And of course, there are people, they might get coverage and it's perfectly fine because it's something which I cannot control. You will get the coverage, but not everyone does. And that's the issue we are facing right now. I've showed you a few of the other slides last time as well with the concerns from the people. Of course, the complaints, the pink dots and the different data sheets. And of course, there will be people, they will say that yes, we do have coverage, but their neighbors might not agree with that. And that's the reason why we are here in the first place. Now, I have seven places which we have analyzed and you can see, if you see the red spot in the middle and all the other, the closest we have is the Alternative 7 Utility Pole and the PGE Tower Alternative 1, but it's still, it does not cover few of the streets. Now, in order to, since we are building this site and we are making sure that it covers the neighborhood, it provides you with the best LTE coverage to make sure that all the emergency equipment works fine, plus our cell coverage, plus our data, anything. And in order to do that, we have to make sure that we go with the proposed site, which we have right now. All the other alternatives, to be very honest, if it did work, we would go for them. However, they're really far and, and it's, it's not feasible at this. And I'm sure the slide isn't, the, the presentation is in front of you, but if you have any questions, please let me know. I could go over the presentation if you would like, but I would like to save your time on that.
Yeah, I don't see a need to go or, I gave my copy out there, so if you, anyone sees it, go bother Paul because he'll keep it if you don't. But I have one very important question that's been bothering me for years. What does LTE stand for?
Long-term Evolution.
Okay. I just, we have 4G, we have 4G LTE, we have-
I'll tell you, I'll tell you in a normal word. It's a really good question because not a lot of people know this. Basically LTE provides you the data, of course, and which, what people need. It's not just the videos and the YouTube and the movies. It's a lot of things, a lot of apps. Your Google, your Yelp. Anything which you need nowadays, you know, the phone is the only thing which we have right now. I mean, we look at our phone pretty much every 10 seconds for no reason. Of course, we have so many things going on and we need LTE. If we were on UMTS system, which is the older version of technology, we would never be able to do all this. And very soon, it's, it's only going to be LTE. That's it.
Okay.
And we need to make sure we fill this LTE gap. Now, now the reason why some people do have coverage, yes, we have different technologies. I'm not going to go into that, but you might get signals for voice, but you might not get the data. You might get the data, you might not get the signal. There is a gap still, which is of course on AT&amp;T website, which anybody could see. There, there's no, so that's pretty much it and we need LTE on each and every place to make sure that we have real coverage. And I'm sure, I, I understand you might have AT&amp;T, you might not, it doesn't really matter. The point is, there is a gap in coverage. A lot of people, they're going through this, they're struggling to make sure, and trust me, it happens to me all the time because where I live, I have the worst coverage, but there's, I know how it feels when you have drop calls and your system doesn't get connected when you're lost and your maps doesn't work. And that's the reason why we are making sure that our network is perfectly fine and accessible.
Are there other questions from the commission?
Well, sorry, there's something I can't see on my screen that I was reading on his screen.
Not a problem.
So I understand that there is cell coverage in this area, but maybe not by, not by your company.
Yes.
So I mean, that's, that's, I just wanted, I'm asking, is that true or not? There is cell, there is cell service?
Yeah, I mean, there are other companies and everyone has a right to choose whatever they want to choose depending on the money or cost.
Right, okay. So I guess that's one thing I wasn't really clear about because the way some of the information was, at least the way I was understanding it, my perception was that there maybe wasn't cell service in this area, but I'm understanding now that there is cell coverage in this particular area just through other carriers.
Absolutely, Commissioner McGriff, and you have a very good point. When we talk about cell coverage, of course, it belongs to someone, some company. We all have Verizon, is there, I'm not going to name a lot.
No, I don't.
We know all the names, of course. I mean, there's no-
I probably don't, but that's okay.
However, there are so many people, there are so much people in, in this vicinity. I don't know the exact numbers, of course, you might know. And out of those, there are a few people that have AT&amp;T, if you have different cell carriers, then it's fine. What we are here for is AT&amp;T to make sure that there is coverage because the people, they have the cell phone and they have AT&amp;T and some of them might have great coverage. I'm not. But I do have the data which shows that there are people, they're concerned and they're complaining. And this is the data which was driven last time I spoke to you of course. I've named few streets, seven streets which I remember, and I have a list of 14 or 15 streets which are completely concerned. These citizens are concerned, they are asking for, to make sure that we have a better coverage. We get concerns from them firsthand and that's the reason why we are here. Otherwise, there's no, there was no need.
Right.
Well, and I might add, Commissioner McGriff, that here in the Pacific Northwest too, when, when we, the courts have given us guidance on what is a gap in coverage, they've said up in the Ninth Circuit that, that a gap in coverage means a gap in this carrier's coverage, not a complete lack of coverage by any carrier in, in the area. In some areas of the country, that might not be so, but up, up here in the Pacific Northwest, it certainly is.
So Mo, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought you were done there. Mo, you said that you had several requests for the service in that area by people on those streets?
Concerns.
Concerns against or concerns about lack of coverage?
Lack of coverage. Drop calls, no coverage. These are the main concerns, drop calls, no coverage, of course, no service, there's another one. So these are the concerns which comes-
My point was, was we hear more from the people that are present at these meetings that do not want it there. Where are all those people and why aren't they coming to one of these meetings or submitting something that you could submit to us?
Absolutely, Commissioner, that's a great point and that's the reason why I'm not answerable for people. They, I don't, I don't know why they don't come.
Makes it sound like we don't know if there really are those people out there as well.
Well, last time in the hearing when I was taking all the names of the streets, some of the commissioners agreed with the coverage. And to be very honest, all I need is one person who accepts that yes, there is no coverage. There is a deficiency in coverage and of course, we have concerns and we have the data and we have submitted the report, so this is the valid report. However, if they don't appear to be in the meeting, it's completely, they have their right.
And in addition though, I, when I reviewed the tape, the last meeting, a number of the folks that were turning out who, who had opposition and concerns about, about this application acknowledged that they did not have good coverage here or they did not have service. I think a number of them said that they were AT&amp;T customers and-
As a commissioner, I mean, I feel responsible to hear the people that come before us and I hear more negative concerns than I do positive.
Absolutely.
And when I hear that you're saying that there are those people, I keep thinking, well, where's their letters to the, the department here or to commissioners?
Well, but their letters went to AT&amp;T and they're bringing them in mass to us.
Are they? Okay, I hadn't seen those.
You're not going to be here.
Okay, they're in there.
Well, no, no. There aren't any letters in here, but-
Typically, you're not going to hear people coming here to complain because their coverage is good. They come here to complain because it's bad.
I, I guess what I was going to say for the record is that you presented Exhibit B in the last package, your, these apparently, these purple dots represent customer-reported coverage issues?
And I'm just saying it because I know that there's a lot of people present here and they have been probably more vocal.
Are there, are there other questions from the commission for the applicant?
It's, it's, you know, it's a little bit of a mystery to me, you know, I make a phone call, I don't know who's connecting to, but you know, the call goes through and I don't think anything else about it.
And it's a great thing to hear from you because you have AT&amp;T and you have coverage. There's nothing better than that to hear. But again, there are people, they do not get connected and of course, it's not, like I said, phone is not just the device to connect to other people nowadays. It could be used for emergencies, it could be used for so many other things which we cannot. You're there for a reason, of course, I, I respect that and I respect everything what you say and all the questions because there should be questions about it. However, we need to have the coverage to make sure that everyone has the coverage to be safe or to connect or to use phone, whatever reason they want to be.
Well, and it's your business to provide that and that's what you need in order to conduct your business. I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to. Whatever their usage is, it's your business to provide that coverage.
Absolutely, sir.
And you need somewhere to put a tower to do that coverage, so.
Can I ask you sort of one more cellphone type question? So I'm presuming that the, the customer-reported coverage is, it's, it's intermittent? I mean, it's all the time or just some of the time or you, like you say, a dropped call? It's, you're talking along and then boop, they're just disconnected?
It's basically the data which we collect when they call to the system and they say, well, or there is a data, there's a system called MDS, mark the spot, which is on the app, of course, you can click and you can say, I'm not getting this. So we get the data out of that app. Or they can call, but it's comprised of all these databases and of course, it's a yearly base and then we have to complain. It's not like they're going to complain 15 times and there will be 15 dots. However, it's coming from the same location. We know there is this location where we have a problem.
So again, is it, is it, this is, is just getting me to understand how this works. So are they, are they kind of, what you're seeing in your data, are they persistent or is it intermittent? I'm not getting this or it's, you know, it happened three days ago and then it happened again four days? I mean, I'm just using that as going it out there.
Since we didn't add any more towers, we didn't do any addition to the coverage, so of course, they are getting complaints every day. I mean, it's persistent, it's not once in a year kind of a thing.
Right, it's, it's-
The reason is, we didn't do anything additional to the coverage, so there's, that coverage is not going to add up and just like that.
Okay.
So we have to do and that's the reason of it.
Well, and the factor of how new their phone is, maybe they, it's, they're, they're getting better coverage because they got a newer phone, but now they're not getting data, but their voice is getting out. I mean, I see that when I worked at the high school and literally I can walk down the hall and room 101, blah, 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 room 103, hello? Hello?
That happens to me all the time, Commissioner Marnie.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, thank you, that just clarifies-
Thank you so much for your time, Commissioner.
So I was just, just wondering. Oh, go ahead.
As the, the number of phones increase, most population, will the capacity of that tower diminish?
This is a great question and thank you for asking it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is the exact question I was waiting for and I'll, I'll tell you why, Commissioner Marnie. We do, like she's saying she's getting the coverage, anyone else is saying, however, the, the people will increase, people will buy AT&amp;T and one day, there won't be any coverage because like I said last time, if you are watching movies in your car or you're watching Netflix, the data service can not, it's, we need capacity, so we need more sites. And this is the site which is going to help us to make sure that this area does get what they require in order to make sure that everyone gets the coverage. And absolutely, to answer your question, it will go worse if the people, so we have to add, we, we do add antennas, we do add technologies, depending on the, the concerns from the people, if we need capacity, we add more antennas, we add more towers. Tower would be the last solution, but we do have other ways to make sure that the capacity increase, we increase the capacity.
An interesting data point that we, we've just gotten from, from our research is that since 2006, the demand for wireless service has increased 50,000 percent. And that's just kind of a number I can't wrap my brain around as a statistic, but that's what, that's what the, the research has shown us. The other data point to consider is that less than 50% of individual homes now have landlines. And so their emergency service, whether it's the button that you touch on the device that your mom's wearing, you know, because she wants to make sure she can access medical care, or whether it's a cellphone, all of those devices are dependent on wireless service as well. And so as that number drops and it continues to drop over time, it's even more important that people be able to have good, reliable wireless service in their neighborhoods and in their homes where they, where they need it most.
It's probably a moot point, but I don't know, John or anybody knows this, but how many cell towers do we actually have in, in Oregon City and are there other ones on private, on school property or similar property that are in neighborhoods? I mean, I don't know.
It was in, some of that was in-
Was it in there that I missed? Okay.
I don't have numbers on how many are in the city, but I know the Boynton Reservoir has two providers on it, on the Boynton Reservoir. See, that's, that provide the city, they pay the city rent for, for occupying that. I did have a question if I could ask real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
So, is, and I noticed the footprint of the, of the area where you're placing the, I'm assuming a generator's going to be there, and all your switching will be there, and power provisions will be there. Is there room for other providers on this facility and can, so that either AT&amp;T or the school district can, can utilize that site for, say, I don't know, who, I don't know what the other providers are, I've kind of lost track, but...
This goes to one of the commissioners' questions before we began, too, about co-location and the drawings that we've, we've provided you. And, and the drawings do show full co-location with full build-out of, of the tower with respect to the ground equipment. I think that we have taken into account what, what will be needed.
Right. If you see the diagrams we have, of course, when you plan any site, we make sure that if, there was a question which was asked, why there are three, it's a co-location tower, of course, we see three different red centers, we see antennas placed in three different locations, and of course, we go for, we make sure that if there is a co-location needed, we, we can take care of that concern. If there is enough room. Right, I would rather have Tom answer this question since he is...
Yeah, because I'm not sure you answered. I'm, I'm curious if other providers would be allowed in that site and have the room to do what they need to do on the ground.
The space that AT&amp;T leased from the school board was 35 feet by 55. So, it's, it's a sizable area, but the way that we've used that space, one for the storage area, or the storage building for the school district to replace what we're tearing down. Right now, there's not enough space inside that leased area for anyone other than, other than AT&amp;T. I mean, then, I should rephrase that. Is, to my knowledge, would not be room for another carrier inside our lease area. The school, the school district wanted to use it, they may be able to lease space inside depending on how big their, their equipment is. I don't know what they'd be using, but they may be able to go inside for space. But most likely, what will happen and what, how the school negotiated the lease was to make sure that any future co-locator on the tower thought to come to school and negotiate for ground space. So, let's say it's Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, whomever may be about to come back and talk to the school district about space. Does that, does that answer your question, sir?
You couldn't put another antenna on a, on the same pole?
You can, but it's the ground equipment.
Correct. Right now, the tower's designed, structurally designed for three carriers of, well, it's two, two additional carriers of similar loading to AT&amp;T. So, we're just saying, okay, here's our loading, and in theory, we have the most weight and everything else that'll be going on the tower. So, there'll be two more spaces on it. But yes, they'll be able to do that through AT&amp;T, but the ground space will have to be, that issue will have to be addressed with the school district.
Ultimately, that helps reduce the number of towers that are going to be required to give that capacity and, and that, that infill that, that we're going to need.
Well, and, and some of the stuff, like, if another carrier comes up, they can, I would assume, be able to approach AT&amp;T and say, you already got a generator on site, can we, you know, and you're going to power it up if you need to, can we lease the generator capacity off of you? And then we only need a 10 by 10 for an equipment cabinet for switching or whatever. I mean, that's all, I'm all speculating, but that's the sort of stuff that they would be coming to you for, not necessarily coming down to, for another 35 by 50 space. And if they did, then it has to go through a public approval process, so.
One more, just to get, get straight in my mind, you're telling us that this is not a, I hear you're saying this is the best site, but is it the only site in your analysis?
When Mo went through all of the alternatives that we, that we were given by the, the members of the public, because we, Mo initially did an, an analysis of where this could go and drew a ring, and, and the site acquisition consultant from LexCom determined that, that this was the only site in, that we could co-loc, that we could build here. And then Mo went back after we got input from the public and ran, this weekend, I might add, all of those other sites and did the calculations to assess whether it would be technologically feasible for us to use one of the other sites.
I just wanted to hear.
And in his professional opinion, as an RF engineer, he concluded that none of the other sites were feasible for the reasons that are stated in the, in the document that we presented to you.
So, in simple answers, yes, you could use other sites, but you'll have to put up multiple antennas to get the same level of coverage, which means it's a pain in the butt and it isn't cost-effective.
I want to make sure that that's accurate and bring Mo up here.
I'll go.
You'll be careful you don't get that quoted again.
Yeah.
Antenna will not, more antennas will not increase the coverage, it will just increase the capacity, like, to go back to your answer, it's a perfect question. If we put more antennas, of course, we're going to put more technologies, we can include more technologies and more spectrum, high band, low band, anything. It's a technical term, however, it's, will not do anything to the, to the coverage itself. Other than, the analysis, if you see, if you see the plots, I didn't even run the plots on all seven of them because I didn't need to. Few of the, if you see, a few of the sites are alternative sites, they're very far. And one is the, actually, the AT&amp;T tower, existing tower, and we cannot cover this area from that tower, which is extremely far, bless you, far. So, no, the other sites will not work at all, not the same level of coverage which we want. This is the only place where we can actually cover everything and we can cover this whole very nicely and take care of it. If you see the locations in the, in the, in the very first document, you will see all the different locations are, and it works, physically it does work, if you see the map, and if some location is towards the northeast or southwest, it's far. It's, if it's not that far, it could work, but if it's, it's really out of over searching, it might not work because that's the reason why we have the searching or the search area, the search vicinity, why we need the site there exactly. Otherwise, we couldn't make anywhere. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, so let me ask this question for the record. Since we're all aware and it's obvious that there are other carriers besides AT&amp;T, are there other carriers' cell towers in this area?
That's what I was going to ask, but I was...
There is, I'm not aware, to be very honest, I'm not aware of that.
I figured if, if anybody would know, you would. Because obviously, I'm, where I'm leading to is that if there's some, if there's another carrier X out there, that's an alternate, possible alternate location for co-locating with them rather than building a whole nother one.
And that's our preference, to co-locate, co-locate the antennas somewhere else if that's going to work rather than to build another facility.
Right, so I don't, I don't, you know...
From a business perspective.
I don't know, you know, I, I'm not familiar with every single carrier because I tell you, the commercials they have on TV for everybody, it's like, what? I've never even heard of them. So, that's what was my question, is are there, is there, I don't know if there's another cell tower out there.
Not in this vicinity, which is the one which I, I'm referring to search area ring, which I'm looking forward to have. To be very honest, this is the area where we need the site. And when this scrub, basically, when there is a team and they go out and they look for the candidate for us, they look for every single place, even any poles, anything which is available. And they let us know that these are the six, seven, or eight, or nine, or 10 options. Which one do you like? So, we go with our, we run an analysis just like that, and we make sure. But in this search ring, we couldn't find any, and all we have are the one which are really far. The water tank would be, if you see the, the water tank or church...
No, I saw that.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just thinking, so if I lived further down on South End Road and I'm an AT&amp;T customer, I guess there's no service down there.
You live...
On South End Road, further down, outside, outside of the city limits, between here and Canby, then there must be nothing, I guess.
No.
Well, there are AT&amp;T sites.
Further south?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, there is one, if you see the alternatives, number two, ADC Tower, existing AT&amp;T Tower. I mean, there are AT&amp;T sites all over, of course.
No, I'm talking, no, yeah, that's not, that's not south.
North and south both.
South.
Of course, the map is just...
Yeah.
...smaller, but there are AT&amp;T towers all over.
I just think if you go, go down this road and we go off the map...
Perfect, and I can show you the, if you want.
So, there must be something down, I was just saying, is there something down there? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
There is existing sites.
Okay.
And this is the gap.
Okay, got it.
Sure, ma'am.
It's the donut hole.
Well, and I understand exactly what you're saying. I live at the south end of Oregon City and, and had a cell coverage problem there, and I changed carriers because, like Damon was describing, I, I could get some coverage in one room, if I walked to the next room, I'd lose coverage and drop calls. So, just by changing carriers, and I won't mention either of the carriers, but when I, when I changed carriers, all of a sudden, I had good coverage. And when I had called the, the first carrier and asked if they were going to be adding any towers, and they said they had no plans to add towers in that neighborhood or antennas or anything, so I, I, I had no choice. I had to change because I had no coverage.
What concerns me is with the technology just changing exponentially, that tomorrow, we're going to have an announcement from AT&amp;T that towers are passe, we've just introduced a technology that we don't need towers, we're bouncing it off the moon, or just bouncing it off somebody, the Russian satellite was on us.
Commissioner Mahoney, we really wish that that were true. But unfortunately, I think, I think Mo can confirm in the, you know, in the near future, and I'm talking the next decade or so, cell towers are a big, are a part of the neck, network. You know, we're working on things to, to infill, and to work in concert with the cell tower network, the major, you know, the macro network, and to try to increase capacity, you know, kind of in the in-betweens. But there's, there's nothing out there that's going to alleviate the need for cell towers 10 years? I don't know.
I'm not sure. I mean, there, there are always new, new technologies, I mean, they, they work on it, they research, and there, there's so much going on with the technology sector, of course, you're aware of it. We still need the towers in order to connect to other towers, that's how it works unless there is some other technology comes out which does not require a tower and you can just connect via Wi-Fi system and just go all over. But at this moment, I didn't hear anything about it.
It's coming.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
It's coming.
I hope, ma'am.
Maybe not in our lifetime. Could you just briefly go over, again, you talked about this at the previous hearing, why this particular location? Because, again, as I've been out there looking at the site, I would have moved it elsewhere on the site, maybe behind, directly behind the main school outside of the path of all that cluster of trees.
Or at the far end of the...
And I understand from, from the notes that, that we have from the previous site acquisition consultant, that the specific location on the site was in response to some of the homeowner association comments to the school board, from what I understand, as well as the school board wanting us to be on that particular place as well. That's my recollection of...
That's basically, I mean, it was less pathway to get to the site, you're also higher up. If you drop it down and put it in the back end of the softball field, you've just lost, like, 10 and a half feet of height, which is coverage, right, yeah, so.
Well, we also want to, want to use the existing vegetation that you have on the site, too. And so, to the extent that there are other trees on the site that will, that will help to mitigate the visual impacts, we certainly, that, that's a consideration as well.
Yeah, like leases can, leases can be changed. So, I, I just think that, I just have a concern after hearing the public that that particular location may not be the best location. And it, you know, again, it's a bland use decision, we have a lot of latitude with a Type 3, so I guess I'm just throwing it out there.
Do we, do we have any other questions?
Nope.
No, I have to hear from the...
Okay.
Let's hear from our public.
I do have one question, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no.
For doing that. But what's the life of the, of the stealth tower? You know, when you have the camouflage and you have that material that's, that's hiding the tower? How long does it last? And what does it look like when it wears out? And what are the provisions that you guys are giving us that you'll replace it when it starts looking kind of strange, or?
I would add, my colleague...
We can get the answer as, as to the, the useful life of it. I, I'm not exactly sure how many years it is, but I do know that we have an ongoing responsibility to maintain this, to maintain both the stealth appearance as well as the tower itself.
I've seen these towers go up and they've, they've had a, a finish on them, or galvanized finish, or something like that. And, you know, there's one that's behind Wilco that's all rusty and it looks terrible. And so, I just, I'm just curious about that. The other question that I had, I've, I've read a little bit about, and this probably happens a lot more in, in colder climates, but rime ice and the formation of, of a thick layer of ice and having it fall off and clobber somebody usually doesn't happen when it's, you know, in, in a remote location, but this is at a school, and I suppose the kids wouldn't be there during an ice storm, I, I get that. But it's, you know, in a high, high, a high-used location, so any question, any thoughts about that?
Well, the, the thought that comes to my mind is, is that, that your, your structural engineer for the city has, has looked at our design for this tower and has, is responsible for taking in, taking those things into consideration. We've designed it for, you know, one-inch-thick ice on it. They have looked at the plans and said that we, we meet the, the applicable standards.
Yep.
And with respect to your concern, Commissioner, about the, about the maintenance, you know, we would not object to a condition of approval that says that we, we will, will enter into a maintenance plan with the staff to, you know, to reflect your community's need.
I'd like that, I'd like that to run with the land or the leased land so that if there's another company that comes in, they are also responsible for maintaining that quality as well.
We would not object to, to a condition of approval that, that covered the maintenance in that way.
All right, great.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your time.
Do we have anyone from the public signed up to speak?
Ooh, blinded by the light.
Where'd the light come from?
I know, I know, we're not allowed to wear sunglasses up here, but man...
I didn't bring my sunglasses.
Thank you.
Should try it after, should try it after operations.
Okay, the first person signed up to speak is Paul Edgar.
Well, you are now.
First person he has in his hand.
If you have a lot, do you want them to come up at two at a time?
No.
Nope? Okay.
Commissioner, I'm Paul Edgar, I live in Oregon City. Kanema, where I live, fills, the students from out of the Kanema area go up to the school. And I was, went out into my neighborhood and talked to different residents out there. And there was a universal lack of acceptance of this cellphone tower at the grade school. And I was, I was kind of surprised, and it's kind of that formula, if, if only one child was to ever get hurt through whatever reason, because it was at the grade school, that was unacceptable. What was the likelihood? People weren't really trying to get into all of the detail of it, but there, there's a probable, probability, and they just didn't think that any probability was acceptable that if one child was there. And so, I was at the school board meeting, and I actually testified. And I think that the school board looked at this, and this no decision was really a decision against it, not for it. And it was about that same mindset where if there was any probability of somebody getting hurt, a child, in any way, they couldn't go that way, and that included the chair. So, public safety was one thing. Another thing is, this is going to affect real market values of a lot of nice homes and people, residents around there. This tower really is unsightly. It detracts. And it will detract, and over a period of time, if we go out 10 years or 15 years, you're going to see a net loss in gross taxable income coming into the city as a direct result of this, and it will affect a lot of development. It would be my opinion that even if there were other tower locations that were 90 percent affected, and I'm looking at the alternatives, I went down towards the fire alternatives, I went down towards the fire station, or the Methodist church, or someplace. And then we look at the long-term plan, concept plans that you guys have approved on South End. We see the growth going out that direction. And it would be logical that if we got those areas in, right there that cover by, by locating a tower in, close to the Methodist church or somewhere along for that area. And then I look at another tower where we plan and see the growth going down South End. It's more logical to me that we, that we could be putting up multiple towers, doing in a, in a more appropriate location. And, and this is really, it's really not appropriate. I would only hope that you guys realize that when they had these votes, they're, one of the votes that I was made aware of was twenty-eight to four, twenty-eight residents against it, and four were school board members voting for it. So, the, the percentage is really pretty raw in how the public is adamantly against it. The school board understood that they don't need to have a lot of people against what they're doing, because those same people are the ones that got a vote for school bond issues. And we're all in favor of education. And this will affect the ability of the school board to get positive votes, because there is so much negativity about it.
Thank you, Paul. The next person to speak is John Falkenstein.
John Falkenstein, Oregon City, Salmonberry Drive. I, this afternoon, got a chance to look at the staff report, updated August 21st. And as you can see from the tabs, I found a number of things that concerned me as I went through it. And so, to try and hit some of these briefly, seventeen point five six point zero one zero point four, the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in that underlying district. Finding is that complies as proposed. And I guess that what concerns me is I don't see how a finding can be made such as that, when the tower will in fact substantially limit, impair, and preclude the actual use of a community facility that is used by adults and youth year-round, and actually eliminates the access to that facility. So, in my mind, that, I don't see how that could be a finding in support. Seventeen point eight zero point zero one zero, the point four, encourage the location of monocult telecommunications towers and antenna arrays in non-residential areas. The finding complies as proposed. The applicant has proposed the construction of a new wireless pole in a residential zone. I don't understand how that's, how that can be a, complies with, with, with that, with that item. Seventeen point eight zero point one zero zero, support tower location requirements. No new support tower shall be permitted under the provisions of seventeen point eight zero point zero seven zero unless the applicant demonstrates to the satisfaction of the planning manager, and the results are verified by a state of Oregon certified professional engineer that no existing co-location or modification possibility can accommodate the service needs of the applicant's proposed support tower. Complies as proposed. Maybe I'm missing something, but I, I, I didn't find the state of Oregon verification that there are no co-location possibilities. I think that's really important, personally. And frankly, frankly, the comments that Mo made about more antennas will not increase coverage, it doesn't make sense to me unless he was talking about putting more antennas on the same pole. I don't think that's what is being suggested. Certainly not what I would suggest. I think two antenna arrays that are separated will increase service. So, I'd like to see that state report, frankly. Design standards, one point eight, I don't know if that's...
Go on, wrap it up, but finish up.
Finish up?
Yes.
Okay, I have a whole bunch more things, but I'll go right to the end.
Your time is expired, but please conclude your remarks.
I, I'll skip all these items, which I think are really serious items. And I am requesting either you vote no on this proposal, or a continuance, and give AT&amp;T time to actually meet the conditions of approval that are at the end of this report, and address the real issues that are being raised by the community. I think that they owe it to you and to us, the community, to, in advance, discuss how they will meet those conditions, not do so after your approval.
Sir, you were, you were going through those one at a time, from front to back? Was there some that were more concerning to you than others that you didn't have the time to address? Something that was really disconcerting?
I was really disconcerted personally, that they just totally ignored the seventeen forty-one, the tree mitigation, when their utility lines were going to go down and potentially remove or damage the twelve trees. I think that's a real oversight and piece that's missing, that should be presented to you folks before you would pass their request. So, that was certainly one. And another one, frankly, is parts of this report, setbacks, for example. It references the eighty-one feet to the tower. Now, first of all, I think the eighty-one feet maybe is referring to the earlier location, not this location, because other documents say it's seventy-five feet. And the code, as I read it, says seventy-five feet, not to the tower, as the finding references, but it says to the perimeter fence. I, I've measured with a tape measure. I don't know how they're shoehorning this thing in there. I don't see seventy-five feet from their perimeter fence to the property line. I'd like to see stakes out there, so that I could figure out how they're going to accomplish this. And I encourage you to find out.
Real quick, just so we get on the record, could you just go through and just read the, you know, seventeen point whatever objection? Just don't say what your thing is, but just tell us which code numbers they are. That way, it's in the record and, you know...
Sure, I mean, there's several of them, but I'd like to...
Yeah, no, just, just, just kind of read the numbers off.
Seventeen point five six point zero one zero point four, part four. Seventeen point eight zero point zero one zero, also part four on that one. Seventeen point eight zero point one zero zero, and yeah, that's...
That's fine.
That one, okay. Seventeen point eight zero point one one zero. And there's subparts under that, D setbacks, yeah, specifically, I was looking at the D, the setback, and G, the noise reduction. There's another one, which was the other site, not the current site, the way I read it. Couple more here.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that it's in the record, so we didn't cut you off of your ability to appeal, or whatever.
I appreciate that. Seventeen point four one point five zero, seventeen point four one point zero seven zero, and seventeen point four one point one three zero.
What was the last one?
Seventeen point four one point one three zero. Those are the ones.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, now you're on the record, that those are items you object to, and if something happens, you need to appeal, you're on the record. So, I didn't want to cut that off.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Sarah Herbert.
My name is Sarah Herbert, I'm from Oregon City. I did attend the school board meeting. I do live in the neighborhood surrounding this tower. I also have children that will be going to that school. And I have a number of concerns about this tower going in. As was mentioned already, there's a safety concern, a six-foot board fence, even an eight-foot board fence. What seventh grader isn't going to see that as a challenge rather than a deterrent? There's definitely an attractive nuisance there. Putting landscape around it, arbivida or otherwise, serves as a foot-up to be able to help them over that fence. So, while we want it to be pretty, we're also providing extra help to curious children, which is of concern to me. Another big concern for me is the general lack of transparency that this has had to the children who will be impacted. The school did not send notices to the parents of the children that are going to be attending that school. The city did not send notices, no one sent notices. So, it bothers me that the voices of the neighborhood who want cell coverage are given priority over the voices of the parents and the children who are being impacted by this decision. It seems unfair to prioritize that minority of that one neighborhood over the greater catchment of the entire school boundary areas. It also concerns me that we are changing the functionality of that space. We're taking out bleachers, I heard them offer to build new bleachers, but I'd like to know where they're going to put those where we won't get hit by a fly ball, since the current bleachers are behind the fencing, and they'd have to completely redo the entire baseball diamond and reorient it to have that be safe, to put bleachers somewhere else. And I'm concerned about why it's being put there. Is there somewhat, I understand that there have been lots of concerns about it needs to be at that school. Why there? Why not up at the corner of the parking lot? Why not somewhere else? I'm not sure that that was really explored. When I was in attendance at the school board meeting, the school board started the hearing and the discussion by saying, "Oh, we really know nothing about this. This is the first we're hearing of it, so please, AT&amp;T representatives, be thorough." Because they didn't know. The operations department knew, but the school board did not. And that's concerning to me. And it's concerning to me that they didn't have the opportunity to work through all of these concerns that were raised to them. Unanimously, as they were polled, they all expressed concerns about the safety of the children. And they all expressed a desire to look into ways to make it safer. And then, the opportunity to explore those has gone away. And that is concerning to me. It's concerning that the children are going to lose the functionality of their schoolyard in favor of cellphone coverage. And my final concern is, I agree that cell towers are going nowhere. For the foreseeable future, they are how we're going to get our cellphone coverage. But as technology changes, would the use of that tower change? And if so, what kind of public input is there going to be? Or is there open access for AT&amp;T, or anyone who sublets that tower from AT&amp;T, to add new technology without input from the community and without input from the school district? And those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next, next person to speak is Tom O'Brien.
Good evening, Chair Goodwill and Commissioners. I was surprised that the, excuse me, order in which testimony was called, I am accustomed to first-in, first-heard. That does not seem to happen this evening. I am going to be speaking on behalf of the neighborhood.
Very briefly, you need to introduce yourself.
He did, he says Tom O'Brien.
I said, I'm sorry, I'll do it again.
Yeah, I heard him.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. I'm representing tonight the Neighborhood Association, so I request five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Particularly since the applicant received forty-three minutes rather than fifteen. I do have answers to a couple of questions that the commission asked of the applicant. They were unable to answer, but I had asked those same questions previously and obtained answers from LexCom, et cetera, regarding, so I would like a little extra time for that as well. I'll address those when I'm finished. This evening, I'm speaking on behalf of Hazel Grove Westling Farms Neighborhood Association. I'll begin with a brief summary of what took place at the school board meeting of August 11th. I was there. A number of citizens expressed their concerns regarding placement of a cell tower at McLaughlin Elementary School. AT&amp;T also testified. After comments were heard, the board discussed the issue amongst themselves. It was decided to take a vote to determine if they should withdraw the contract they had signed with AT&amp;T. Additional discussion took place, and the director of operations was asked, "What would happen if the contract were to be withdrawn?" He responded that AT&amp;T would most likely require the school district to compensate them for the monies that they had already spent on this effort. A motion was made to withdraw the contract, and a vote was taken. Three board members voted to withdraw the contract, three voted not to withdraw it. Since it was a tie vote, the motion did not pass. I suspect there may also have been the thought that should the planning commission reject the application, the school district would not be held financially responsible. The neighborhood, while not pleased with the decision, was encouraged that half of the board members present recognized the potential danger of this enclosed area, which is likely to attract children. A six-foot fence will only present an opportunity for some adventurous lads. The neighborhood very much cares about the safety of our children and our grandchildren. Some school board members also share our concerns about this attractive nuisance. This past week, I attended a meeting at John McLaughlin Elementary, and upon entering the building, noticed several flyers. One in particular caught my attention. The heading states, "At John McLaughlin Elementary, safety is our number one priority." However, the school does not seem appropriately focused on child safety on the school grounds. A six-foot-high fenced area that can be a magnet for young children is just one example. After that meeting, a neighbor expressed concern about three hazards on the property within ten feet of the walking path at the school. I will show you copies and pass out copies of what I observed.
Make sure staff gets it.
Everyone's had a chance to get a copy. These photographs were taken on the school grounds the following day. All three of these child safety issues are within approximately ten feet of the walking path. The top photo on the first page is an open drain pipe, thirty inches in diameter, that connects from that location through the playfield area over to the retention pond on Filbert Drive. The lower photo on the first page shows the grate somewhat in place. It was originally held to the front of that concrete with four bolts. It is now hanging by one that is partly pulled out, allowing for what you see on the top of the second page. That is, there's a sixteen-inch-wide opening for students to get into that thirty-inch pipe. All they need to do is go around that gate that is supposed to be protecting that pipe opening. The other three on page two are simply a twelve-inch pipe, again, missing the grate, it's been removed, it's laying in the BlackBerries up against the fence. On the third page is a roll of chain-link fence with very sharp edges exposed, lying on the ground where children and small pets can get injured. This is the current concerns that I have. The school is not taking responsibility for their number one priority. I intend to share these with the school district, but I thought you should see them first. You can tell by the weeds around the chain-link fence that the... You can tell by the weeds around the chain-link fence that the maintenance team is simply mowing around it rather than removing the hazard. And in fact, they were mowing the day I was there, and they mowed around it. Let's all take responsibility for our children's safety. Please, request AT&amp;T to consider an alternate location that will not be as readily accessible to our young children. Now, as far as answering the questions, the question was asked about the material that the branches are made of. I was told by the LexCom representative that it is fiberglass. If anyone has owned an RV or a boat, what is the life expectancy of fiberglass unless you're out there on a regular basis maintaining it from the weather and the elements? The ultimate length of this agreement that they've signed with the school board is 25 Bob, you asked about the future and where things are going. I will give you this. It talks about light radio technology, and my understanding is that Verizon is aggressively pursuing this. Now, the interesting point is, it was actually developed in Bell Labs, which previously had a very close relationship with AT&amp;T.
Yep, losing technologies.
Isn't that interesting?
Don't forget, we have to give that to staff.
Yep. We'll need to give that to staff.
An exhibit.
The next person signed up to speak is Kathy Hogan.
Kelly, you have some slides.
I -- you have some. Good evening, Commissioners. I am nervous. I'm going to do this slowly, so I do it with this little stuttering and mispronounced words.
Well, we do understand this is your first time in front of us.
I know. I'm afraid of you. The rest of you, no. But I know where he lives and she lives.
Just take a deep breath. You'll be fine.
Yeah, well. Okay. This is the first map. I'm going to talk about this one. The first map is current coverage map, taken from AT&amp;T website. It shows how poor their service is in our neighborhood. The dark orange areas are the perimeter show where the coverage is good. The light orange area shows where the coverage is weak. The yellow area shows where almost no coverage is provided.
I can't tell. Oh, okay. I see dark orange. Okay.
Yeah. My glasses. I'm getting new ones. McLaughlin Elementary School is indicated with a red arrow. Note the small yellow area. A large area of weaker coverage area is indicated by the blue arrows. Existing PGE power transmission towers are indicated by the green little box.
Yep.
And -- oh, yeah. This one's there, see? Yeah, see, there the little green one? Okay, now the second one, please. There should be two.
Oh, this one? Okay.
Yeah, that's that one. Okay. The second map proves that -- provide to you by AT&amp;T. It shows pink dots where they have received complaints from their customers. They propose improving coverage using the McLaughlin Elementary property for an antenna site. AT&amp;T states the coverage will consist of a small circle of coverage that intends roughly -- extends roughly from Hartload Road on the north to Parish Road on the south. Notice all -- notice on their map how few of their pink dots will actually receive improved coverage. Envision a small circle that is center at McLaughlin. Notice blue triangle in the upper right of the map. There are seven pink dots, very close to a curtain -- current antenna. Engineers tell us the radio waves project out from the antenna, not down to the ground. Will this also be true at McLaughlin? And then now the third map. The third map shows possible alternative locations that have not yet been considered by AT&amp;T. They are all nearly nearby and could actually provide better coverage at McLaughlin School itself, since radio waves go out rather than down. Fire Station 17 is shown with the red arrow. Oregon City United Methodist Church property is shown with the gray area. The Oregon City Christian Church property is adjacent to the Borington Water Tower. Both are shown with beige arrows. AT&amp;T has mentioned that they had also considered a PGE tower on White Lane as an alternative. This is one of the towers shown on the first map. I share -- shared with you. Any of those towers should provide better coverage for a greater number of customers.
Ooh, well done.
Well, you guys didn't interrupt me.
Kathy, can you just say your name for the record?
Oh, Kathy Hogan.
She did.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I did.
No, she said her name.
Yeah. I can remember that.
Yes, that was before she apologized for being nervous.
Yeah.
I just --
Oh, yeah. And I just want to agree with everybody that's been talking and consideration. I guess I've had a lot of problems because I am really concerned about the safety of these children. And I think everybody that cares about children, we can at least eliminate wind safety hazard in their lives. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Jim Pites.
Kelly, I'm going to want to see that orange map again later, but thank you.
My name is Jim Pites. I live on Hazel Grove Drive, which is right behind John McLaughlin School. If I were a better baseball player, I could probably hit a ball right into the tree that they're planning on building. Besides that, I am an AT&amp;T cellphone customer. I have, and my wife have, two cellphones and a mobile hotspot. So there is nothing -- oh, one other thing I wanted to tell you. I have two types of AT&amp;T coverage at my home, charitable and none. It comes and goes, that's true. Because the use of cellphones comes and goes. When the number of calls go up from everybody, the ability to get into the system goes down. So there are times that we can have good coverage. There are times that we have absolutely terrible coverage. There was nothing I would like better than to say, "I can pick up and call my son in Virginia on my AT&amp;T cellphone, but I can't do it because I'll lose it, I'll drop it. It's bad." So I want you to know how much I want to have good AT&amp;T coverage. With that, I want to tell you that I don't want to have it at John McLaughlin School. I think I'm a grandfather. I'm a father, and I really care for kids. And if there's any possibility that one kid can get hurt, climb a fence, climb up the arbividae that they were talking about, any of the things that you're saying there, it's not worth it. I'll give up my ability to have my good AT&amp;T coverage to save that kid. It's just not worth it. The other thing that I wanted to bring out, and in listening to everybody talk, was the fact that I've talked to a lot of friends who don't have AT&amp;T coverage that live right around me. They have very good coverage, excellent coverage. They never complain. Now, we heard tonight that they won't have any towers any closer. I don't know if they don't have towers, how they can have such good coverage unless they've got something about the system that AT&amp;T doesn't know, and I doubt that very much. So I just think this thing is kind of being pushed down our throat. I don't think it's right. I ask that you vote no. You turn this thing down. Make them go back and figure out what's really best for our community and for our school district and for our kids. And I don't think putting a tower at John McLaughlin is the best thing to do. So I ask that you vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, so do you have a landline, too?
Yes, I do. And, you know, we thought this is really great. We cut off the long-distance coverage on the landline because we've got universal coverage on the cellphone. We're really strongly thinking about putting the landline back on because -- for our long-distance coverage, because we can't rely on our cellphone at our home. And I travel all over the country with AT&amp;T, and the majority of the time, we have good coverage. So I'm basically happy with AT&amp;T when I'm in my motorhome, traveling over the country and going to Hume, Arizona, but not when I'm sitting at home doing the wax job on that fiberglass motorhome that I have to take care of.
So were you inferring that all the customers, all the neighbors that you talked to had great service because there is another tower?
We're not AT&amp;T customers.
No, but I'm saying --
He said they had other --
They had other carriers, but I'm saying, did you say that they -- there must be some other towers in the area? Is that what you're inferring? That gives them the service?
Well, yeah. If you have to have a tower within this limited area to get good coverage, and they have good coverage.
So there must be something.
There's something there. I don't know what it is. I don't know what they've got. But to say, "I have to have this tower in this area to get the coverage for these people," well, if they don't have a tower in that area, what do they know that AT&amp;T doesn't know?
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last person I have signed up to speak is Peggy Falkenstein.
Hi. Peggy Falkenstein, and I live in Oregon City. I've lived with my family at -- right on Salmonberry Drive for 28 years. I have a master's degree in public administration, and I've worked in Oregon City for 35 years. Our self-end concept plan is a beautifully crafted document. Tonight, let's begin to make it a reality. Tonight, let's use the values stated in our plan as guideposts to bring the document to life. Please honor the well-crafted plan and the statements in our self-end concept plan regarding livability and community use. This is what the community will see when they drive into the McLaughlin School parking area if this proposed cell tower is built. Danger: keep off. Caution: beyond this point, radio frequency fields at this site may exceed FCC rules for human exposure. No trespassing. This is right when you drive into the school, for parents, for any community member. And this, the reason I know that that will be there, and another one that says AT&amp;T, is because these are photos of signs that are on another cell tower on Lynn Avenue between -- on the fence, the six-foot fence, between the evangelical church on Lynn Avenue and the apartment complex there. These signs represent livability? Do they represent community use? Tonight, please show the Oregon City community that the self-end concept plan is a working document. And one more thing. Using our self-end concept plan as a framework for decision-making is useful only when information is accurate. We've heard examples tonight where I'm not so sure how accurate it is. In the public comments that I submitted for your review for this meeting, and I'm going to quote myself, "There is a discrepancy between the application to the city and the contract with Oregon City School District as to the easement width." The city application specifies a five-foot-wide utility easement, and AT&amp;T spoke to that tonight. That's why they said, "No problem with the 12 trees that go out to the street, out to South End Road." The school district lease, which I've read thoroughly, the lease agreement with AT&amp;T specifies two 10-foot easements for power and telco lines. Also, I stood on the exact spot where the tower would be, on the northeast corner of the site. And with this tower reaches up into the boughs of a 400-year-old oak tree. Not the one that's coming down, but another one. It just barely gets there. What will that do to reception? Why wasn't that 400-year-old oak considered? And the reason I know it's 400 years old is because there was, when Al Gallagher was principal there many years ago, he had some reason to test those trees and find out how old they were, so they did a core sample. And they're at least 400 years old. And that tree is just, it's not touching, the tower wouldn't touch it, but it goes right, you know, up into probably five feet from the bough. I don't know how you can get reception with that tree there. It doesn't make sense to me. Maybe the experts know something I don't know, but I think that 400-year-old oak may have to come out. I believe -- okay, so what are the implications of all of that? I believe it's vital to have an accurate and clear application. So I'm requesting tonight that you vote no on the cell tower, or at least grant a continuance to ensure that is accuracy in the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, at this time, we will have a rebuttal time from the applicant for five minutes. So if you could limit your rebuttal to five minutes, that would be great.
We are, we will do exactly that.
Thank you.
All right. Just quickly to touch on some of the issues raised by the members of the public today.
Can you re-identify yourself for the record?
Certainly. This is Kimberly Allen of the Bush Law Firm for AT&amp;T.
Farquhar Tuola from AT&amp;T.
With addressing some of the concerns raised just now with respect to an issue raised about property values, two things. One, the tower is designed to mitigate the visual impacts. And I would submit to you that good connectivity is something that folks are looking for when they're in the home-buying market. Additionally, in Oregon, the Luba has spoken to this issue and has said that generalized testimony that's not site-specific or doesn't quantify the loss in property value for a particular site is not substantial evidence of a loss in property value. So the Luba has already spoken to this. I know that attached to the petition were a couple of studies cited. Those are studies from Florida from 2002. No evidence is before you today of any loss in property value that will occur as a result of us putting in this site. We heard a number of objections with respect to the safety of children. And I would submit to you that there's no evidence that there is any danger to any children here. that there is any danger to any children here. I would submit that your planning staff, your professional planners, have reviewed this application, and they have reviewed the materials that we have submitted, and they have found that we meet every criteria, every part of your code to build this cell tower. Your structural engineers have considered the safety of the tower and the safety of your children, and we have offered to mitigate the visual impacts. We will increase the fence height by eight feet. We will transport bleachers, and we also, the tree that is due to be removed, the big tree that is right, that everyone sits under, we would offer at this point to move that tree to another location on the site where another alternative area would be. In addition, we heard a number of complaints about, a number of concerns about the site and alternatives, and I'd like to have Mo address that, Ms. Hogan's concerns.
Good evening, and I heard pretty much all the questions, and really great questions. I just wanted to bring up to your attention, there was light radio technology mentioned, and of course, one of our vendors, ALU, Elcatel Lucent, they came up with this, and they're working, they're still working on it, but this technology is not out yet. However, we do have a technology called a small cells, but this area is too big to, it does not fall under the small cell solution at this moment. It's extremely big. Plus, there was another concern which was brought up, the church location, and I completely understand. It's, to be very honest, it's a location, the location is good. The only problem is it does not cover the complete area at the 75-feet red center or the tip height, or the height of the tower. I have included a few of the propagation maps for you, Exhibit C and I think D, in order to, both of the locations were actually mentioned, and yes.
Additionally, we would like to address that the maintenance issue. We certainly would agree to submit a maintenance plan prior to commencement of construction to cover the entire 25-year term that we have with the school district on this. As I indicated, we'll move the large tree that is due to be removed to another area on the property at our expense. The easement issues, we have heard from staff in the revised staff report that they are comfortable with dealing with any easement reconciliation at the time of construction plan. So that is not something that is a predicate for land use approval here. Again, we submit that we have met all of the criteria in your code, all the criteria developed by your city commission from a policy standpoint to permit a cell tower. It is a permitted use in this district with a conditional use permit. We have done everything that we can to mitigate the impacts visually, to make sure that this is safe, to fence it, to landscape it, and to do everything we can to be a good neighbor in your community and yet provide the service that our customers are asking for, and that is clearly lacking in this particular area. We need to be on this location. We've met the approval criteria, and we would ask that you approve this application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
I actually have a question for staff. I was trying to find the photograph or the... (noise) You're out of time. There you go. I'm out of time.
She just got it done.
Yep. And the prior hearing, we had a, and I have all the documents, but I can't find, of the alternate, the other location that the school district said they didn't like that was on the property. And I've just been flipping and flipping and flipping here, and I'm just not finding it.
Looking for it. I think we do have that on file, because that was the original application submitted.
Right, yeah. And I was trying to figure out if I still have the original. Oh, no, I have the updated one.
This is the first site plan that was submitted. It does show the pole back behind the corner of the school on the other side of the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's kind of what I was remembering. I just thought my memory was getting a little faulty there. So you can close the public record?
Yeah, at this time, we'll close the public record, and staff or commissioners, you have discussion?
I also wanted to see if Kelly could put up the two maps that Kathy showed. Is there a possibility to put them both on the same screen, side by side?
Need to shrink them, grab a corner and shrink them.
She's grabbing the other corner.
She can do that because she has a mouse.
Yeah, we don't have that. See, they know you, Damon. You know you shouldn't be having a mouse. I'll put you in the driver's seat.
Damon wants a mouse. That's right. We couldn't even get this file if you had a mouse.
Well, so...
It's interesting. It's interesting, so.
I'll start the ball rolling.
All right. Thank you, Kelly.
I guess, first off, the location is between two consenting adults. They have made a business arrangement. They have chosen not to alter that business arrangement, and the only, frankly, the only thing that we, as the planning commission, I see have anything to hang our hat on to deny this application is public safety. The attorney said, FCC says we can't talk about safety, but I think that is, has to do with RF, not about poles crashing, or ice falling, or kids licking electric sockets, or whatever that may be. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, there's hundreds of ways kids get injured every day. Tom showed three potential ones on the site as it is. I think reasonable engineering safeguards are being proposed, and you can't really do much more than that. At a certain point, parents and teachers have to parent and teach, and as a teacher, I know how much fun that can be, too. So, I don't see enough evidence here other than, you know, to object to the, there's nothing specific for me to hang my hat on. The trees are being mitigated, and personally, I think removing the tree and planting new ones is better than trying to move that big one. It's just mature enough. I think it will look good for a half a season, and then it's just going to die, and then you got a bigger problem. The, you know, bleachers are being, additional bleachers are being proposed to compensate for the loss of the shady little throw-your-blanket-down-and-watch-the-kids-play-ball effect. And to be kind of a jerk about it, there's going to be shade along the lee of the fence that's going to be proposed, too. So, I think with the maintenance plan being proposed, the additional fence height, that I find myself unable to do anything other than before this proposal. More than willing to hear an argument to the contrary.
Well, I guess I'll give an argument to the contrary with all due respect to Commissioner, maybe. The planning commission here is asked to concern itself with the public benefit derived from the wireless technology that would give a benefit to the public for communication versus what I consider to be a contract with the public in that we are mandated by public law to include the citizenry of Oregon City in the development of concept plans and the comprehensive plan itself. And the more I consider these applications, I see that is a contract between the public and its stakeholders, and the South End Concept Plan being no different, and the comprehensive plan being no different, that we have that strong contract with the public. And the applicant has stated that they feel that they meet all the conditions of the conditional use approval criteria, and I respectfully disagree in that they have not garnered the support of the public, given the testimony that I've heard here tonight. And three to three vote for the school board does indicate to me that they support this wholeheartedly. And I do not feel that the construction of a utility as applied for is compatible with the neighborhood in terms of livability. So, those two findings, I'm going to, I'm not going to support this application based on what I, those statements.
Paul?
Okay, so, I really didn't feel like there was enough evidence to my satisfaction that the size and the shape of the proposed use was suitable for the site, and therefore I felt like it failed under criteria two in terms of the characteristics of the site being suitable for that proposed use. I, for the similar reasons, I don't think there's enough information that convinces me that this cell tower won't alter the character of the area. You know, this is a place where kids play, and there's going to be this huge tower looming up above them. I just think it's going to have not only a chilling aesthetic effect, but will also be an attractive nuisance. Now, without talking about EMFs or any kinds of things that are protected by federal law, I think that the location of this object on this site, a school, causes criteria three to fail in terms of the proposed use not altering the character of the area. And then finally, I think that it also is not consistent with the intent of the South End Master Plan because it really affects the livability, which that plan really does have, which is the primary tenet of that plan, and therefore I feel that this also fails under criteria plan, or criteria five, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yes?
If I may interrupt momentarily, the South End Concept Plan has not been approved by the city, so please focus on the...
Yes, the South End has.
Yes.
It's, this application was submitted before the South End Concept Plan was approved by the city.
So, by the goalpost rule, so the comprehensive plan is where you should...
So then I will retract that, and then I will cite any mention of livability in the comprehensive plan in the applicable locations.
Yeah, I think I mentioned the South End Concept Plan, too, and I'll retract that, and I'll just apply my comments to the city's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations.
Seth?
I'll tag on what Paul was saying for condition three. I really can't see how this doesn't impair the school site, both as an education facility where kids are running around, but also, I mean, just as public space. I mean, we've certainly had a South End Concept meetings there, and there's games there, and I think as a fixture in the community, I see that being impaired, at least how it's proposed now. I mean, if it was on a different spot on McLaughlin Elementary property, that could change. But where it is now, I don't see it as a fit. Additionally, I'm not convinced that either co-location isn't an option, or that just partnering with another provider and either subletting space, that could also be another option. But as it is, I think we can do better.
Tom?
I can't say anything fresh that everybody here hasn't already said. I can find nothing to disagree with what Damon said. Everything he said was just spot-on, except I agree more with what Bob and my other fellow commissioners at that end have said. I'm more inclined that it just, for all the reasons you gave, without going into detail, I'm more inclined to support, not support it, for the same reasons you guys have chosen, you gentlemen have chosen.
Denise?
I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight about the necessity for this, and I will say that I am completely sympathetic to people who have loss of coverage. I also want to say for the record, please don't watch Netflix when you're driving. That came up. I'm sure the children in the back are watching it, but I can tell you it's distracting to drivers behind people who are watching movies on their TVs and their cars.
Going 45.
Yeah, or whatever they're doing. But anyway, that's a aside. So I understand that. I'm not, I'm a cellphone user, but I'm not, I don't let it rule my life. I really like all of the information both sides gave. I will say that I really prefer the first location that you guys suggested, that the school district rejected, and I would totally support approving this if it was there, because I think it's a better location for the community. I think it's a better location. It may require a little bit more work on AT&amp;T's part, but I think they could make it work. I have a problem with the current, the proposed location. It's just, when I was out there, I walked up to the back fence of the property that's closest to it, and I looked at that. I walked to the other side of the property where the alternative was, and it was definitely further away from the property adjacent to Filbert Drive. It's pretty close to that house on Salmonberry. So that's, it's going to be a tough decision.
And if I can counter rebut briefly, the whole, it's a climbing attractive nuisance, I would just point out that there's a dozen trees taller than this tower and imminently more climbable as an oak tree than a slick metal-sided tower. I mean, the tree that's there is 50 feet tall, according, you know, so, and it's a lot more climbable than all that other stuff. So, I think the attractive nuisance argument just doesn't hold water based on the environment that it's already in.
Either that, or there's a whole bunch of crazy kids out there that we don't know anything about. I think, too, you know, the, I appreciate the offer to try to move that tree, and I don't know if you're familiar, but there is a company here in Portland Metro called Big Trees of Oregon. I don't know if a tree like that is movable. I mean, I'm familiar with oaks. They have an extensive root system. Again, you know, you guys, the staff knows, I'm just a real proponent of trees. It's very hard to grow another oak tree. It's very hard to mitigate an oak tree with three trees that will never, ever be that size, ever, ever, in our lifetimes. And I'm sure that whole area probably was a larger oak savanna at one time, and we're losing that. I'm not saying that they weren't cut down when the farmers came and all of that, but it's just, it's hard. I appreciate the thought and consideration. Maybe the concept is, is you plant some really, really big trees instead of, as I said in the previous hearing, stick trees, because they're wonderful. I mean, that's one of the things I noticed when I was back there. They're beautiful trees. And the other location wouldn't require any... And the other location wouldn't require any removal of trees, which is why I like it better. So Charles?
I tend to agree with what Denise was just saying. I don't really have a problem with the cell tower on the school site if it was in a location that did not interfere with the use of the space and didn't require removal of the trees. Frankly, I agree with Damon. I don't think the hazard is really a legitimate concern for climbing the tower. I attend a church where there's a tower directly behind the parking lot. It's been there for 20 years. And to the best of my knowledge, nobody has ever attempted to climb it. And certainly, nobody's ever been injured on it. I'm more concerned with, you know, the exhibit that we saw earlier with the site on the opposite side of the schoolyard seems a much more appropriate location for that. And I find it hard to believe that shifting the location of the tower 150 feet would make any significant difference in the coverage that that tower provides. So my inclination would be if the tower was relocated to a different place on the school site, I'd be willing to support it. But I have a difficult time supporting it in that particular location. I also agree with Denise that the chances of that tree surviving, being transplanted to a different location is pretty slim. Just the trauma to the root system, it's very unlikely. You have to dig a hole that would be about the same diameter as the tree to move it, which would be just huge. So I don't think that's a...
Although they're doing that for the base.
I just don't... I don't think that's a practical solution, even though I do...
It's a nice gesture.
I appreciate the gesture. And frankly, if you're willing to spend that much money to move a tree, I would think relocating the tower to the other side of the schoolyard would be a better alternative. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at this.
Chair, point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Before your deliberations...
You'll need to come to the microphone, please.
Kimberly Allen for AT&amp;T. I've certainly heard the commission here and would request, rather than a final decision tonight, that we be permitted to have a little more time to perhaps talk to the school district and see how firmly fixed they are on the particular site that they have directed us to.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for...
I move that we continue.
We've got a lot going on here, Chair.
So Jennifer, let me ask you this question because I believe Peggy Falkenstein... Somebody said in their testimony that they were possibly requesting a continuance. I don't know if that was an official request for a continuance or what was going on there, but I heard it. I wrote it down, so I need your advice.
The first hearing was continued.
Yes.
And so the mandatory requirement that the commission granted a continuance has happened.
Okay.
If... The record has been closed by the commission. If the commission would like to reopen the record, it could make a motion and do so. And then you could consider the applicant's request on the record.
Okay.
And then...
So we will...
Or you can go forward to make a recommendation because the record has been closed and you're deliberating.
Right. Okay, so I will go to my fellow commissioners because I'm sure Charles and I are thinking the same thing. Are any of you inclined to reopen the public hearing to comply with the request of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so yes. I would say yes. What do you say?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Okay. We're all agreeing?
We'll reopen the public hearing to take the testimony of the applicant.
Can we make a motion and do this formally?
Yes, I would move that we reopen the public hearing. Anybody second? Paul seconding. Okay. And we have to vote.
Do we have discussion?
Yes.
After the vote?
After the vote, we'll do the discussion.
No, after the second, we do discussion.
Yes, after the second, we can have discussion. The motion was to move to reopen the public hearing. Yes, Paul.
I want some discussion.
Yes, have some discussion.
Okay, now, why? Why reopen a public hearing?
Because we've had a possible request for continuing it to have them talk to the school district about moving the...
Alternative site.
Alternative site. The first one that they actually showed us and then they said, "Well, this was the school district's preference." It's obvious to me that there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion with a part of the school district, but that the facilities person probably had a lot to say about it.
I'm gonna support that in that I believe that they have access to due process. And the more information, the better. But unless something really compelling comes before this commission as a result of reopening it, my position's gonna remain the same.
Okay, duly noted.
Okay, now the vote.
Okay. Commissioner Gile?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Reopening the public hearing first.
So now we...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name is Kimberly Allen for AT&amp;T. We request that we be permitted to put some additional evidence into the record. We would like to have an opportunity to go back to the school district to talk about the first site that we had initially chosen and see if we can possibly make that work here. We would appreciate both leaving the record open as well as continuance of this hearing so that we can have those conversations and have with... Provide you with the most evidence and the most information that you can to make the decision that's before you.
Typically, we need 30 days because of getting the record and notifications out. But we've got a very busy schedule, so...
Is the applicant requesting a continuance and an extension of the 120-day and 150-days?
Yes, in fact, we've already extended it well into October.
That's not gonna be long enough, I doubt, for what you're proposing.
Do you think you need 30 days?
No. I don't know. Actually, I need to consult with whoever has been in contact with the school district.
Yeah, I don't know how long... I know we have a public, a big public hearing, the first public hearing on the 8th. What else do we have on that agenda?
The applicant needs to request a continuance.
Well, she is.
I am requesting a continuance.
And the city needs to have enough time to make a decision with the 120-day rule.
Right, and we will waive that time.
For how long?
And that's what I'm trying to give the information to her is to what the minimum amount of time is. Because if it... I don't... Tony said last time, two weeks is almost impossible for staff to do a turnaround. So it would be at least a month, which puts us into an extremely busy schedule. So it may be that we need six weeks in order to have an appropriate time. And that's why I was looking at staff to see whether that... Because six weeks may be way too much time. So I want to give them the opportunity to have a reasonable...
Six weeks would be October 13th. Well, I think the concern I share with Damon is that if the applicant needs to go back to the school district and they have to go through a process of coming to a conclusion to come back to us with... There's a time period there that, let's say, optimistic that takes a couple of weeks. Then they come back to staff with a revised proposal that maybe that's another week. And by the time the staff gets it and they put their staff report together, you're talking about four weeks right there.
Right.
So it's gonna be a minimum of four weeks to get a turnaround on all that.
I think that's correct. And the October 13th date might be reasonable for everyone if we can get the 120-date extended.
She just did it.
Yeah.
I request a continuance to October 13th.
And you're willing to extend the clock?
We will extend it.
She did all that.
Okay.
The same amount of time?
Okay.
The same amount of time? Pardon me, the record is extended for the same...
Yes.
The 120 days extended the same amount of time as that gap.
Agreed, counsel.
All right.
Okay, so we have a request... I'm sorry, I'm doing your job. But we have a request to continue this to a date certain of October 13th and the clock be extended.
I would like to hear from Tom O'Brien from the Neighborhood Association briefly. We need to ask... They have some opinion.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City resident and Neighborhood Association chair. Since the testimony has been reopened, initially, AT&amp;T showed a map that offered an alternative site that they had determined would satisfy their needs, perhaps not quite as well as McGloughlin. But I believe that it would have a lesser impact on our neighborhood and our community if it were at that tower on White Lane that they had identified initially. While the South End Concept Plan was adopted by the city commission, I would go back and look at the dates when this second application has come through from AT&amp;T. Their initial application was before the city approved the South End Concept Plan. But I believe this one was not submitted until June. And I'll have to check dates, which may have been after the city commission approved the South End Concept Plan. So I would like you to look at those two possibilities as long as you're reviewing things and considering an alternate location. The initial location was very much rejected at a meeting that we had and you have copy of the minutes of it in January. And two of the participants who attended that meeting were PTSO officers. They spoke very strongly against that location because it conflicted with other things that the school does there and it was adjacent to a small playground.
On White Lane?
No, on the school grounds, at the other location on the school grounds, the initial location. And that was what prompted the school district and AT&amp;T to look for an alternative. So that is in your testimony. That is, you know, part of the record already. And I think that that needs to be considered. We had been told early on in the community that they had run this up to the PTSO. They called it the PTA. They didn't even know it was the PTSO. And yet, two of the officers from that organization showed up at our meeting very strongly opposed to this tower on school property and that location in particular.
And what was the... What's there again?
May I pardon?
Small playground.
A small playground?
It's the playground.
It's a small playground alongside the school. It's right around the corner of the school building from where that was positioned.
That's easier to move than...
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh, Kathy's moving. No, no.
It was also rejected because...
Kathy Hogan.
It was also rejected, that site, because the kids have to pass it to get to the school grounds from that playground and go to the field and they run the track down there. And it's so close to the school, in the back of the school. Can you guarantee me that thing won't fall from a windstorm, ice storm, lightning, and fall on the building? It's that close, it could hit the building, the back of the building. And you think it's funny? Put your children in that school.
I make a motion. We continue this to a date certain of October 13th.
Second.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Chair Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Gile?
Aye.
The hearings continue to October 13th, 2014, with an extension of the 120-day decision deadline concurrently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Do you have any other business?
So do we have any communications?
Willamette Falls Legacy Project first public hearing is September 8th. There will be three planning commission hearings, September 8th, September 15th. Special meeting starts at 6:00 p.m. and then September 22nd.
And the 8th starts at 6:00 also?
I think that's right, yes. And the staff report will be available next Tuesday along with the agenda. And currently, they... All of the application materials are available for review, of course.
And I, again, make my request. Please tell us what is the new stuff so that we can concentrate on that because most of us have read the old stuff. And if there's any room in the budget, I would really appreciate not having to go to Kinko's. So you could put that request before Mr. Tony. Okay. Or I would be happy, if you copy it, I would be happy to pay you for it.
That was it for staff communications.
Is that it?
Just so you know, they know me by name now at Kinko's. I'm there every two weeks.
So...
No objection, I move we adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
We're in adjourn.